Okay, you're all set.
Okay, great. I got the little message. All right, calling to order at 6:30. The November 17, 2020, meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectment, all members of the board are present. And first order of business is Governor Baker's prologue. So here goes. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough's website at www.southbrowtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner, by finding the meeting at www.southbrowtown.com/remotemeetings. Now, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And with that, welcome, everybody. And our first order of business is public comment. And we've got a number of attendees, but no public comment. There was some indication that folks may wish to comment after the various boards give their updates that we have scheduled. So with that, Ms. Cassell and you said Ms. Butka are in the audience? And is anyone else in the audience from our first scheduled appointment, which is Youth and Family Services? So we can bring them over. Hello, Sarah. I see your picture.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm gonna, I'm using my phone because very conveniently, we just lost internet. So I haven't done this before on a phone. My apologies.
That's okay. Believe me, I criticize no one when it comes to technology. So
Wonderful. I'm in good company then. Thank you. So go ahead.
Sorry, let me just give a very quick. You know, this is one of our, one of our goals for fiscal year 21. We started doing it last year as well, was to hear from the various boards and committees of the town, other than strictly a budget context. And obviously, whatever you all want to talk about and report to us and have a dialogue about, but also keeping in mind that we're interested in what goals you may have set and are pursuing in this fiscal year and beyond, and any issues that you may have confronted that you want to bring to our attention and maybe get our way in on. So with that, I will turn it back to you.
Okay, great. So thank you for the opportunity to share what we've been up to. It's been a very busy year. So I thought I would at least let you know, you know, what we've, what, what has transpired in our department since March, since there's been a big shift in how we deliver services. And it's sort of a progression leading up to now. We've had to shift all of our services to online or phone platforms. And fortunately, for the most part, that's all been a pretty seamless transition. For our clinical services, we've had to make adjustments to our consent forms to include tele-mental health services and using a free online HIPAA compliant platform for phone calls and appointments. We've continued throughout all of the closures to provide resource and referral support, individual counseling, group therapy, workshops, clinical consultations. We have worked with Town Council to amend our consent forms for the option to have in-person services. And so we have those in our back pocket, but to date, we have not moved forward with, with seeing people for in-person appointments because it hasn't been critical. We're reserving that for when absolutely necessary. And given the, the nature of the services we provide, the prolonged exposure we have with people, we feel it's in everybody's best interest to maintain the way that we're currently doing things, especially if it's working. We've also developed a stronger relationship with the Southborough Police and have issued what we're calling our info cards, similar to a business card. But what's happening now is that when police are being called to a residence for a mental health phone call, they're issuing one of our cards and making a strong recommendation to the residents to give us a call to follow up. That has been really helpful. I know that they get a number of mental health phone calls and they've had some transition in their, the clinical support they have internally with advocates. And so that has been a good partnership. And we've had quite a few phone calls back to residents in response to police coming to their house. I would say our need-based services is the area in our department that has had the most growth this year, as you can imagine, with many people experiencing increased housing instability, food insecurity, unemployment, needing increased financial aid, and just generally needing more resources for a lot of different things. We've been very happy to help facilitate the mortgage and rental assistance program for residents, which rolled out at the beginning of November. And we just sent our first batch of applications over to accounting and to the Housing Trust Committee for review. And we have three more applications waiting in the wings for completion. So that's been a well-received program, and I thank you for your involvement in that. I think residents are very happy to have that opportunity. We've continued to offer prevention programs online, and I'd really like, love to highlight something wonderful that's come out of having to do things remotely. We've developed an online talk show called Coffee Talk. I don't know if anybody has seen an episode, but each week we feature a different guest. We actually have Representative Carolyn Dykema coming on the show as our special guest on December 1st to talk about housing instability. Today, we had a conversation about suicide prevention. Doesn't sound very uplifting. I promise there's some, there's some really positive things sprinkled in there also. But the intention is to try to introduce the community to various providers and members of our community that we feel are important for them to know, as well as having a platform to talk about some of these challenging topics. So to date, we've, we've recorded and co-produced with Southborough Access Media 20 of these episodes every week, which has been very fun and something we're very proud of. Let's see. We have been working on lots of trainings and webinars to try to keep up with the ever-evolving environment that we're in right now, the changing pressures that this pandemic has highlighted in our, in our community. We have a new graduate clinician who is working with us for the year, who's 20 hours a week. We very happily welcomed a new administrative assistant to our department on October 1st, and she's hit the ground running, and we're over the moon happy to have her help. Her help really couldn't have come at a better time because we're just responding to needs left and right, and to have someone who, who's dedicated to making sure some of the fundamentals of our department, such as payroll and payables and marketing and responding to registrations, has been really instrumental in allowing our staff to be more responsive to residents. And then I would just say, lastly, that our biggest challenge right now is referral services. Even before this pandemic, we recognized that our, our previous service delivery model was really not sustainable for us. We, we had a, our, our service delivery model was more about providing direct service to residents. And what we recognized was the need to beef up our resource and referral services so that we weren't providing direct service to everyone, and we didn't have the bandwidth to be able to do that. So we needed to make a proactive plan to be able to provide services to residents that we weren't able to see, whether we were at full capacity or they had the resources elsewhere to access services. So we continue to try to navigate that, and that has been our biggest challenge to date because for every individual that comes forward to us, there's seven to 10 variables for each need in terms of what kinds of services they need, specifically around mental health counseling. And so we've come across many, many barriers and trying to navigate that. And one thing that we're extremely interested in and have been for several years that dates all the way back to, you know, when we, when we first started on this five-year budget plan that we developed in response to our sustainability needs is Interface Referral Services. And this is a, a service that towns and cities will contract with. And they have a team of professionals who field phone calls from subscribing communities. Residents can call in directly. And they will help a resident find a mental health provider for the type of service they need, the time of day they need, and the location that they need, with the type of insurance that they have. And they have about a two-week turnaround time, which is really unheard of. And that's really a reflection of the fact that they have a large team of professionals. So I bring that up because currently, we have a very generous grant from the Southborough Community Fund to try to institute a one-year contract with Interface for January 1st of 2021. It's a quick turnaround time. We're hopeful that we can make that happen so that residents experience the least amount of barriers to getting the services that they need. And I said this to someone earlier, unless you've, you've looked for a clinician for yourself or someone close to you, it's hard to appreciate just how hard it is to get an opening right now. And so I really think that this would be instrumental in helping residents get the help that they need. And frankly, it's a service that many other communities around us use and have been using for a while, and we have really great data that supports this service. So we have a, a grant that we're hoping to be able to pay for a first-year contract with them. And we do have in our FY '22 budget funding in our contracted services line item in our request to fund Interface contracted referral services beyond the FY, I'm sorry, not the FY '21, the 2021 calendar year. So I just want to bring that to your attention. You'll maybe have seen our budget submission at this point. I'm not sure where that stands. But, but we originally, in our, in our five-year budgetary plan, we had intended to look for increased staffing to be able to expand our prevention and outreach capacity. And we don't feel as though that's a prudent thing to do at this time, given the pressures that the town is under and the, the financial environment that we're in. So, but we do want to highlight that this is a critical need that we feel could be addressed with this service. That's all I have to say right now. I'm sure there's a lot of other things that are going on that I, I tried to hit the highlights.
Okay, well, I'm gonna do two things. First, I'm gonna see if Ms. Butka wants to supplement in any way before we go around our roster of, of members of the board and with comments and questions. Sue?
No, I think she was, that's a nice picture of my husband.
I like your new beard, Sue.
No, I think, I think Sarah and I talk on regularity, and we spoke earlier today. I so appreciate the fact that the department has an admin, and she seems to be a wonderful fit. But I believe that this service would, would help the department in, in, in many, many ways. But Sarah, Sarah kind of nailed it.
Okay, great. All right, I'm gonna go to Ms. Brascio in a second. I've got one question, Sarah. And that is, again, I'm really not gonna ask you anything about pre-March because the entire world is post-March right now.
Right.
And I'm just curious as to whether or not there are any identifiable trends that you've seen, either because of comfort with technology or, you know, a, an initial rash of calls or, or reluctance of calls, any trends that you've noticed between March and now?
I would actually say that in March and April, it was a bit of a ghost town, which made us nervous. But looking inward, you know, we, we appreciated the fact that people were in survival mode, and it was a fairly anxious time, and people just needed to kind of hunker down. And it wasn't until probably May, June, where we started getting lots of calls. It was, it was almost like a switch went off because it was all within a couple of weeks' time. But people started reaching out to us. We had, back in March, we had two graduate interns working with, with us that were both 20 hours a week. So they finished up with us, which meant right away, our numbers went down for that reason. But also, there was a bit of a, an adjustment period trying to transition everything onto online. And, you know, we had to kind of scramble to, to make sure we had proper consent forms in place. And, but once, once the summer hit, there was definitely an uptick, and it's been pretty steady ever since. And, you know, internally, we've had to make some adjustments with transitioning back, you know, students returning to school and schools making more referrals. Also with the onboarding of, of our graduate clinician as well as the administrative assistant. So there's some, have been adjustments along the way, which have made it hard to, for me anyway, to see what trends beyond that were existing. I'd say right now, I mean, the biggest, the biggest thing is need-based services. You know, there's, there's a lot of worry. There's a lot of people experiencing actual instability of various types. And, you know, we are trying as best we can to keep up with the ever-changing social services that are available and moratoriums and, you know, so on and so forth, and the different resources that are available to people. So, so that's been probably the biggest, biggest uptick has been people experiencing financial insecurity.
And you, you also actually said that when it happened, when everything did go, go quiet, that you were concerned about that, because people were hunkering down, including, you know, all of, all of the people that we're friendly with. But the domestic violence, the, you know, substance abuse, some of that stuff.
Yeah. I think we're growing increasingly concerned about those things as, as time goes on, especially heading into the winter months. As I said just today, we, our Coffee Talk Show was, was dedicated to a conversation about suicide prevention. So suicide and substance abuse and domestic violence, those are all things that are of concern. And, you know, I, I know that we've had some, some intakes for people who are experiencing all of those things, and we're trying to get them connected with the appropriate resources, if, if not with us.
Okay, great. Ms. Brascio?
Thank you. Good evening, Sarah. Good evening, Sue. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hi, Lisa.
I just have two questions on the referral, and then just, I want to touch on something that Marty touched on. So Sarah, have you looked into modeling potentially, what some other communities are doing for the referral services? And again, I don't know what they're doing, so you may answer question two with this question, so.
They are using Interface. By and large, Westborough, Northborough, Hockington, Holliston, all have Interface Referral Services. And the nice thing about that is that in, in having that contract, it allows a department to single focus on providing direct service when there's barriers. So it's not to say that if we have Interface Referral Services, that there's, everybody's gonna be taken care of. There will still be wait lists. There will still be people who can't afford ongoing copayments. There'll still be people who have obscure insurances that can't find a provider that takes their insurance, and they can't afford to private pay. So, so my, what I'm familiar with, I actually get together with the Youth and Family Service Directors in the Metro West area on a bi-monthly basis generally, and most of them have Interface Referral Services.
Okay. I'm taking that a step further then. So am I, I just want to make sure that I understand. So with this Interface Referral Service, you know, a citizen can actually call in for the referrals as well. So how do you envision potentially transitioning? Because currently, you have an employee that, that is, if I'm not mistaken, that's sort of their main focus, is they're focused on the referrals program. Is that not?
That's not, no. I mean, we all, all of us that provide clinical services tackle this service together. So that's myself, the Assistant Director, and our graduate clinician. So when somebody comes in looking for mental health services, our first line of action, what it used to be was that we would say, does anyone have an opening? And is this an appropriate fit? And, and that is not sustainable for us anymore. Our first line of action is to try to find a provider through their insurance that meets their, their search criteria. And that often, you know, after several weeks of work, will yield one or two providers who will actually return our calls. And, and by the time the resident reaches out to that person, the opening may be gone. If we're lucky, maybe they get, they get in. It's not always a guaranteed fit. But it's, it's a lot of legwork because we have to, we have to cross-reference several different databases to determine who our shortlist of providers is. We have to then start calling all of these providers that are in the shortlist. And unfortunately, but, you know, what we expect is that a lot of these databases are not updated. So we've called providers who have actually passed away, who are no longer in practice, but they're still listed on the insurance's website. We've called providers that say they have openings, but they don't. Some providers never call us back. It's, it's a very daunting process, and it's time taken away from our ability to work directly with clients who need help. And so, again, if, if, and it's, Interface has the influence that we wouldn't be able to have. They have their own very robust database. They have relationships with providers who are, who are, it's in their interest to constantly update Interface on, on their availability. So it's why it's a model that works really well.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate it. That's it, Marty. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Lisa. Ms. Malonowski?
Hi, Sarah. Hi, Sue. Thanks for coming. I have a few questions. But first off, I just want to thank you for putting together your director's report for all of your meetings because I find them extremely helpful. There's a lot of information in there, and I definitely read it. So thank you.
Good.
I know it probably takes you a decent amount of time. So I have a few questions on Interface. And I know you and I had talked about this for FY '21, and we kind of beat around whether, you know, this, this service makes sense versus adding another person and that kind of thing. But I watched your meeting, I believe it was last week or the week before. I didn't finish it. But you discussed that you have a grant available to you, but that Interface has two rounds of acceptance. So do you know if you're gonna get accepted into the January or the July start?
They have a spot available for us for January. The, the status right now is that we have Town Council reviewing the contract for, for that. So I've been in communications with, with Aldo about what questions he has. And our contact over at Interface has, has made herself available to answer any questions that, you know, he might have about, just to determine what language needs to be in there.
Okay. And if I understood, the finances of this, the first year was $16,000, and then the subsequent years would be per referral? And do they get paid if they actually place someone? Or do they get paid, like, what, what if a resident calls and they don't end up getting a placement that fits for them? Are we still paying for that?
Yes. So that you pay for an annual contract, and Interface will work with that resident until they are satisfied. So, so if things don't work out with the provider that they had initially referred them to, then they will continue to work with that resident. And in some cases, that might mean an entire year's relationship, depending on, on what the situation is. But there's no limit to how long they'll work with somebody.
Okay. And then the second year, we pay per referral, right?
It's so, yeah, it's based off of the usage. So they have a calculation that they use. So there's a possibility, so year number one is $16,000. Year number two may go up or it may go down. So it could be $13,000, and no community would pay, it never exceeds $20,000. So the, the woman I spoke to, our contact over at Interface, says, I understand that makes things very challenging when you're trying to budget. And so she said her, her recommendation to allow for that flexibility for year number two is to budget for the maximum amount, knowing that it could, it could go down from there.
So if we start this in January, though, you're just talking about a half a year for FY '22?
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not exactly lining up with the fiscal year, unfortunately. And, and I recognize the, the challenges there. It is a, and this is, you know, probably what, what Town Council is looking at, is what the, the payment schedule is. My understanding is that you pay upfront for the, for the contract year. So we would be looking at paying for the calendar year of 2022 and January of 2022. So that would be budgeted, the full amount there.
So we, so we would actually be paying for services in FY '22 that would carry into FY '23?
Right.
Okay. Okay. I think those are my questions on Interface. My next question is, in your director's report, you mentioned the termination form process. Can you explain if that's new and kind of where, where that's coming from and how you plan on implementing that?
Sure. That's, that's Sure. That's, that's basically, um, sometimes we have relationships with clients that um, we have um, that kind of gets strung along for, for a lack of a better way to explain it. And we recognized that there was a need to sort of outline upfront to clients what to expect. We can't, we can't just keep holding spots for people when the demand is so high. And so we've, we've created a new document that outlines um, our process, our intake process, our referral process, um, as well as when we might terminate. Now, terminate is such a harsh word, but it's, it's really when we, we would close a case. And that's not to say that, you know, if we decide to close a case, that the person, you know, if you're a Southborough resident, you're a client of ours, um, you know, that you can come to us anytime. We can't promise we have openings for the service you're looking for, but we'll be responsive in some way. And so we um, decided to institute this termination letter, basically, that would go out to residents saying, you know, we haven't had an appointment with you in the last six weeks, or we haven't been able to reschedule an appointment in six weeks, or we haven't heard from you. There's other reasons why, you know, sometimes we make a determination that the person is doing really well and that we're going to forego uh, continuing services. So we're just trying to formalize that process and send, send a communication to the resident, um, letting them know. Um, and it will also, the termination summary is um, something that will be at the top of the file, just outlining what our work was with that person and, and a summary of, of what the goals were and um, the, the history, and so on and so forth.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Marty.
All right. Thanks, Chelsea. Uh, Mr. Shea.
Thank you. Uh, so questions I had were more um, related to the interface, which have been asked already. But I just wanted to thank you for coming in to make this update or giving this update to us tonight, both to you and to Sue. And I know with, with the presentation that we had from Dr. Medina, uh, meeting or two ago, plus this tonight, you know, it's uncomfortable subjects that, that everybody has to deal with. And I commend you and, and your staff and everybody working there to, for all that you're doing for the people in the town. It's not easy work and I commend you for it. And you know, unfortunately, it's, it's, you know, the reality of this pandemic that we're going through that maybe not a lot of people are fully cognizant of, but it's, it's good knowing that, that you're there. And you're very calm and reassuring in your updates to us. And I'm sure you're the same with the, the people that contact uh, for help. So thank you for what you're doing.
It's an honor. We really all, um, we have a very cohesive, tight-knit group of, of employees. We all work very hard and, and work well together. And it's because it's an honor for us, the work that we do. Thank you for saying that.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Mr. Stivers.
Yes, thank you. And again, thanks, Sarah and Sue, for coming in to give this overview. Question, Sarah, I've seen some of the coffee talk shows, a great communication vehicle. What kind of uh, viewership are you getting on that roughly?
It's been, it's been pretty neat. Um, I hate to say it, but I do, I do log on. So I didn't say this, but we, we livestream the show on Facebook. Um, so it's a live show every Tuesday at ten AM. And we also record it and then it gets sent to Southborough Access Media, who edits the footage, the raw footage. And then um, once we get the edited version, they put it on Southborough Access Media's channel. Um, and then we also get a link to provide onto our um, website and share with any of the guests that came on the show. So our, our first live show that we had, we had seven hundred and eighty-nine viewers, which was amazing. Um, a, a true testament, I think, to our, our specific guest that day, um, Melissa Clark from, from GSA Link. Today's show, just as of right before I came on, we had, I think it was a hundred and eighty-nine views for today's show as of right now. So.
We should actually start syndicating it and selling it.
We're, we're, we're gonna have, um, we're, you know, we're going big time.
Very well done. Um, another comment, I guess, I've uh, followed the last several uh, Youth Commission meetings. And I think this Interface deal is a great deal for many reasons. One, from a budget standpoint, it essentially replaces uh, hiring a person, which was in the original plan. So I think that's, as you suggested, a pretty responsible approach. Second, I, I sense the urgency for this because apparently, as I understand it, there are a limited number of slots available. And it sounds like we've got the inside track for a slot for the January start here. And so if we can get the Town Council's feedback quickly and get moving on this, it's a, a great thing. And then for budgeting purposes, to follow on Chelsea's comment, that if we have uh, the twenty thousand and the FY22 budget, to be able to renew um, the thing at that point. And if for some crazy reason it doesn't work out, we don't have to spend that, but at least to have it there to be able to continue that, sounds like exactly the kind of resource we need to uh, spread the ability to respond here beyond three or four people we have in the department staff. Because I, I can't believe that we're not going to see dramatically increasing need for a number of months yet to come throughout twenty twenty-one, I will bet, in terms of these kind of services. So kudos to this group and to the Youth Commission for the good work you're doing. I think it's a critical resource and I think we ought to support uh, as best we can, uh, the expansion for Interface and, and other services like this. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Um, Sue and Sarah, I'll let you get going with, with two very quick final comments. Number one, I have seen the coffee talk. I'm not a regular subscriber, but I have seen it and it's, it is uh, the, the episodes, is that what you're calling them, episodes? Or um, have, have, the ones I've, have seen have been terrific. So kudos on that. And the second thing is, um, uh, when we had Chief Paulison, I, I, I think we all were impressed with how our public safety folks are working hard to stay ahead of the curve. And one of the things we talked with him about was the mental health aspect of uh, police work. And that is, that is terrific to hear that, that you folks are intersecting and um, you know, building a program there that, that can only benefit the town and, and particularly people in town who need that sort of help. So terrific that, that, that you and the police are doing that.
Thank you. Yes, we agree.
I've, I've spoken to both chiefs as well and um, our relationship with them is terrific. They're two very, very awesome employees of the town. Very, very impressed. They, they, they want to make things um, better too, and they are getting an increase in this type of call. So um, yeah. So thank, and I want to thank all of you for your support of the department. I really, really appreciate it.
Yes, likewise.
All right. Thanks very much. Have a good rest of the evening.
You too. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Bye bye. All right. Next up is the Arts Council. And do we know how many folks from the Arts Council are going to be participating with us?
I see Mary there.
Yep, just moving folks over now.
Okay. Maybe if, 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 if um, the simplest thing might be to put your hand up, not as, and, and that way we'll just know who to move over? And just let me know when we're all set. Is, is, Jen, are you going to lead off for us?
So I am actually not here representing the Arts Council tonight. I'm actually, I aged off that one, so.
Okay.
I was promoted by accident.
Hang on one second.
There's Mary, so she may want to start.
Just let me know when you're done, Vanessa.
Sure.
Mary, now I'm going to guess that you are going to lead off for us on behalf of the Arts Council.
Yes.
Okay.
I think I'm the only one here.
Okay.
See anyone else presently.
Okay. Uh, and just very quickly, you may have been, um, um, may have been on when I, I started off with, with Sarah. But obviously, whatever you want to talk about and give us updates on. But two areas that we're particularly interested in is um, our, our goals that you've identified and are pursuing both in fiscal year twenty-one and if you've identified them um, uh, beyond that, uh, as well as any issues that you've encountered that you want to make us aware of and that maybe we can uh, weigh in on. Okay?
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for giving us the opportunity, or maybe the opportunity on behalf of the council. Um, last time we met, um, we, we were really just getting the ball rolling on a lot of fronts. And uh, we were able at the beginning of the year to have a few exhibits held in the library that were very well attended and um, featured some of our local artists. Both Sigrid Niemeyer, who was doing uh, medical illustrations, and Catherine Weber, who held an exhibit of her encaustic painting. And uh, we were also sponsoring Sophia Brady, who is a Southborough student now onto college. She was working on her Gold Award for her Girl Scout troop. Um, and she was doing open mic nights. Well, in March, she had her second open mic night planned and that quickly turned over to be a virtual event. And it was well attended um, as well. So we were, you know, off to a good start. And then uh, you know, everything happened in March. So we, we have been trying to come up with different opportunities for the local artists um, to feature their work, to support them through all of this. As you know, we give grants from the Mass Council to our local artists. And last January, we had announced about fifty-three hundred dollars worth of grants. Luckily, um, most of the grantees were able to to actually um, do the work that they had set out to do, have their projects um, come to fruition. Uh, and they were creative in, in their approaches. For example, um, the Discovery Museum, they put on some online educational programming. The library was able to contact Southborough Access Media, who recorded some of their workshops. So they were able to do online. Some of the things that were canceled were the summer concert series. Some performances were canceled and um, some workshops. So any of that money that was allocated goes back into the account, stays in the account, rather, and then is reallocated for the upcoming year. We also, uh, well, uh, Denise Johnson was very instrumental in coming up with uh, an event called the Silver Lining Exhibit. And everyone was, uh, well, we reached out to all, all of the, the uh, community, really, to get um, poetry, artwork, photography, um, and a, any other, you know, art pieces. And we were able to hold an exhibit at the Chestnut Hill Farm. Um, and that was held two days in October during one of their events. Um, we partnered with them. And I encourage you to look at the Southborough Access Media um, YouTube um, recording of that event. It was very, very, it was, it was a nice day and, and I think they've actually captured it pretty well. So a big shout out to Southborough Access Media. Not only was um, Youth and Family Services talking about how, how well they're partnering, but I think they've really helped all the artists as well. So big shout out to them. And they're, they always seem to be, you know, willing and try to make themselves available to help us out. Recently, we were awarded a Southborough Community Foundation Grant, which is going to allow us to buy um, structures and portable um, display exhibit um, pieces so that we can actually do pop-up um, exhibits, because that's, of course, really important now. And um, for our exhibit over at Chestnut Hill Farm, we borrowed some pieces and found them very useful. So we are planning to use the grant to purchase um, what we would need to pop up anywhere, whether it be, you know, on Main Street or at the farm again, or at a school in the future indoors. We'll be better prepared um, to do that. So really, we've had continued growth. We've had some new events. Our volunteers are very dedicated and we've been able to partner with um, Chestnut Hill Farm, the library. So, you know, overall, we've had a pretty good year despite, despite all of the uh, challenges. Of course, it was difficult not to be able to hold meetings and all that, but you all know that. Still not having someone's going to find a little space for us in one of the buildings. Until then, we're going to be pop-up and I'm hoping that I don't have to store everything in my garage for the the next six months. I have easels and I have um, you know, frames and everything and I don't have a car in the garage. So hopefully you can find some space for me. Let's see. Uh, and we had planned to work with the Senior Center. That was um, a recommendation that we work with the Senior Center. We had planned to do that. We had a nice meeting and we were planning on bringing in um, jewelry-making workshops and maybe a pastel class and performances. And um, you know, I think, I think we'll be able to do that in the future. It sounded like that the Senior Center was interested in pursuing it with us. Some of our goals are really just to create more opportunities, um, bring in some new volunteers and connect with the artists. There are a lot of artists out there that we don't even know about, so we don't know how to support them. So hopefully we can get a database going um, with all of the artists. And really, we're just trying to support the artists, you know, during these challenging times. People love to express themselves. Um, they're finding new ways to express themselves through art and poetry. We had people at that um, Silver Lining's exhibit who wrote about their, their experiences during the, the pandemic. A few of the, the people had never written poems before, but they were writing poems and um, taking photographs. And it's, it's therapeutic as well as enjoyable for everybody. So we're really just trying to support the artists in town. That's it.
All right, great. I'm going to, I'm going to start off with Ms. Malinowski in just a second, but one, the, the, um, you know, shame on me for not, um, you know, connecting the dots, but the pop-up idea, that's a great, that's a great idea. And um, one of the things, and hopefully that this is, this, this can contribute to it, these sort of dialogues, is we've got the EDC that is um, um, working on and, and they got a grant for some equipment that they can do pop-ups um, at various locations around um, around town. And DPW is focused on trying to get some grants under what's called the Shared Street Program. You know, one, one of the few good things that's come out of this pandemic is sort of forcing folks into more of a creative mode to think about things like pop-ups and, you know, doing art exhibits or, or um, you know, plays or something like that in locations that, that perhaps we weren't thinking about before. So I, I'm glad you brought that up and I'm going to keep giving it some thought about how to integrate you all with the EDC folks and maybe Shared Streets as well to, to bring this whole pop-up idea even farther along. So thanks for mentioning that. And Chelsea, I'm going to go to you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mary. Um, it sounds like your council has adapted well to what's going on in the world. So thank you for all of your efforts. I'm sure it's not easy to think of different ideas. And I actually had a similar comment to what Marty just mentioned. Have you thought about taking artists' um, work and displaying it in some local businesses around town? You know, you could have an artist of the month displayed at Starbucks or something like that, just to give, you know, put people, have it be put on display and um, you know, change it every month or something like that. Put people, have it be put on display and um, you know, change it every month or something like that.
We had, we had talked about it. I actually tried to approach the um, Medical Center. Southboro Medical and nobody returned my calls. But um, yes, restaurants and, and different places, you know, we can, we can try that.
Okay.
It's great. It's a good idea.
Okay, keep up the good work and thank you for um, for coming to present to us. That's all I had.
All right, as I go to Mr. Shea, um, Mr. Purple, who's gonna harass the Medical Center? That's a perfect idea, displaying art, so give that some thought about who's, who's our best harasser to uh, to follow up on that, on that contact.
Well, I think it would be, I think the discussion already tonight, um, I think that you brought up and, and Chelsea jumped in on is, is EDC. And using them as a conduit between the businesses and, and the council. Uh, I think, I think perfect to help with that partnership.
And if I could add, Marty, to that point, um, Chris Robbins has a relationship over at Southboro Medical. Him and I, my first year on the board, had gone over and had a really nice meeting with the person in charge over there. So I think uh, EDC and utilizing Chris, because he does have the relationships already over there.
That's a great idea because Mary, that's, that's a perfect location for some art displays. So, all right, Mr. Shea.
Yeah, and it's great to see, Mary, you and, and everybody being as resourceful as you are over this past, or, you know, eight months or so since March. Uh, it's really, really good to see and building on a comment that Marty had, I can almost see something downtown, Marty, next, you know, next spring. So let's, let's close the road, open it up to, you know, bikers, walkers, uh, utilize as much of that roadway as possible. You know, bring some um, business downtown to the, the House of Pizza, maybe incorporate, you know, the food truck, you know, concept as well. And that makes some nice, you know, Friday night, Saturday night events out of uh, out of that resource that we've, that we've invested in and, you know. That were the beneficiaries of, with, with the state work as well with, with Main Street. It's a great place to, to do that.
Great. Y'all set, Brian?
Yep.
All right. See, Mary, all we had to do is get somebody creative here to present to us and all of a sudden, we're getting more creative. So thanks for that. Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary, for the update. Great to hear, um, following on Mr. Shea's comment. We might try a toll booth on Main Street downtown in Brush Hour when they, when we close it, see what we can do to generate a little revenue. Um, and Mary, following up on Marty's point about the EDC, just for your information, they actually have some tents and propane heaters for the tents that they're making available to restaurants. So you might keep that in mind if there's an opportunity for Arts Council to borrow some of those for an event. Uh, we have those in inventory at this point, so it's a possibility.
Great.
A question, are you doing anything these days with the schools, whether it's the local schools or the private schools in terms of combined programs? Or exhibit space kinds of things?
No, we, we haven't really worked with them. I mean, we certainly can. I think we had talked about working with um, you know, Saint Marks to try to get availability in their. Get their gallery space. But I think they use it most of the year, so it's probably more something we could get in the summertime.
I was thinking both of the exhibit space as well as resources. I mean, I think I've seen a lot of very interesting student art. Over the years, both from Algonquin as well as particularly Saint Marks, haven't seen as much at Fay. But it might be another interesting way to leverage some resources and get greater participation from those.
Well, luckily, we've, we've had Denise Johnson on our board. Um, for the past few years. Um, her term is just about up, but she has the connection with all of the art teachers and all of the student art.
Good. Well, again, keep up the good work, tough times, but you folks are, I think, doing well, being creative to keep the momentum going there. And I would encourage you to continue that. It's a great resource. Thank you.
Great.
All right, Ms. Brashow.
Thank you. Hi, Mary. It's so nice to see you again. I was reflecting back today on, on the last time you were here. And how much I enjoyed hearing about the karaoke events and, and whatnot that you guys were taking part in. Um, thank you for, for being, thinking outside of the box and really trying to find ways to continue to bring art into people's lives. I think now is really a, a great time uh, for that to happen and I think we could all use a little bit of sunshine. Um, just a question on one of the things that you mentioned, you had mentioned poetry nights and, and pop-up art shows. Have you given any thought to, in this new age of Zoom and, and whatnot, you know, it gives us new opportunities. I know we've had more people watching meetings now than may not have in the past. So have you given any thought to like a Zoom poetry night where, you know, you could have people watch and people could come on and read poetry? Or even an art show, you know, to be able to, to pander to an artist and, you know, let them talk a little bit about their, their, their creation and, and the joy that it brings. So um, I don't know if you guys have given any thought to anything like that and taking advantage of the technology world that we're kind of in now?
Yeah, we, we did have the virtual um, open mic night. Um, it was, it was attended pretty well. Um, but there's no guarantee that you're, you know, you're gonna have a good night or not a good night. And to, to organize it all is, is a lot. Um, but we have worked with uh, Southboro Access Media to highlight artists. Um, and I've reached out to artists to see if they wanted to be highlighted. Um, we haven't gotten a great response for that. Um, but we'll continue to, to look at all the different options out there.
Great. Thank you. Please continue to do what you do, even if you can put a smile on one face during these crazy times with some of the wonderful programs and enrichment that you have. It would be appreciated. Thank you.
Mary, we're gonna let you get going on your night. Two, two, two closing thoughts. Um, um, in terms of both the pop-up stuff and the Southboro Medical, Reliant Medical now, I guess, we'll be in touch.
Okay, great.
All right. Have a good evening.
Bye.
All right. And we're now gonna shift to recreation and hopefully Tim and now Jen. Um, and Kristen as well. All right. Oh, we got a full house from Rec. All right. And Tim, are you gonna start things off for us?
Sure, absolutely. How we doing?
Well, excuse me, same intro that I've given for the uh, Youth and Family and for the Arts Council. Uh, you know, whatever you want to talk about, uh, you know, within limits. And uh, but interested in hearing about your goals. Um, and uh, you know, both short-term and if you've identified some longer than that. Uh, and also issues that you've, um, you're dealing with and, and want to make us aware of and maybe we can have some, some, uh, some way in. All right?
Absolutely. Um, I'll do a quick, I, I guess, just update on the programming side of things. Um, just some uh, things we have going on currently. I think the last time I talked to you all is just about midsummer when. You know, we were kinda, you know, not, not giving good news, so hopefully we get some, some positivity out of this one. Um, so I'll start with programming, go over some field usage stuff and then we can dive into the capital, um, capital projects that we have on. And then, yes, we have recently had a meeting on our goals, um, so we can touch on that as well and I'll invite Jen in on that piece as well. Um, as they are being finalized, listed out. So just going over programming, so last time we talked, like I said, it was about midsummer. Uh, we opened back up for programming with our department in about August. Um, August, we introduced um, our drive-in movie nights, uh, which were very, very successful, so we were very happy about that. Our, our free drive-in movie nights, uh, we did three of them over at the near parking lot outside the school and um, and it was great. Uh, we had, we had packed, uh, packed parking lots pretty much every single night. Uh, we're, we're hope, you know, we're excited, our fingers crossed, that we can get back to our traditional format next summer. Um, so we are applying for grants for that and we're, we're starting planning on that. But, but that was a good, um, that was a good way to end our summer, I think, on a high note. Um, and also during August, we were able to introduce a small soccer camp uh, with our partners at Best Soccer. Uh, we weren't sure what the turnout was gonna be, but we ended up with 150 kids uh, over the course of two weeks. So um, just again, just a really good way to, to, to end our summer. So um, September kicked off our after-school programs once again, um, getting back in with the kids when they got back to school. Um, starting in September and ending, uh, and actually ending next week. Um, we were able to fit in two sessions, two four-week sessions um, across all the schools. Uh, we were able to do it in a cohort, uh, we, we decided to do it in partnership with the schools and a, and a core cohort, excuse me, style. So we had a set offering of programs for Cohort A Kids, Cohort B, and then also standalone remote, remote kids, um, who, who chose to go fully remote. So uh, as, as best we could, uh, we, we kinda put our best variety, our best foot forward with those programs. Uh, Alex did a wonderful job with it. We were able to offer eighty-six programs over the last um, two sessions. Now, I wish that all eighty-six filled, uh, wasn't the case. Um, unfortunately, we only had about twenty-two of them that ran. Um, in the end of it, when we kinda did our numbers and when it came down to it, which, you know, we, we can't say we were surprised, you know, speaking with parents. Monitoring, monitoring chatter on Facebook and social medias and stuff like that, some parents just weren't comfortable yet, so we, we totally got that. But you know, the, the, the programs we were able to do were, were very, very successful. Um, the vendors that we use and the teachers and the school systems were very flexible. Um, all of our programs were outside, um, the fields underneath the canopies, um, just folding tables anywhere we can fit them. Um, so it, it, it was really, really good. It was just great to be back with the kids, um, you know, after being really. Uh, out of everything since March. Um, so we, we were happy with it. We wish that more programs did run, uh, but we were. Again, we're satisfied and happy with what we were able to do. Uh, we will be taking programming off um, through, through the holidays. Uh, our plan is to restart come January after the holidays. Uh, we are in talks with the schools right now. To see what that will look like, um, because we will have to move inside, obviously, because the weather is just not going to warrant being outside. So we're, uh, we're trying to figure that out with the schools right now. Uh, we're gonna wait probably till after Thanksgiving to really start, you know, hammering on them to, to get some answers so that we can put some stuff together. But we're hopeful that we'll be able to do something at each school on a smaller scale, um, that we, we feel is the safest, safest route to go if, you know, if the numbers trend and, and we feel comfortable doing it. So, um, you know, hats off to Alex, um, for, for putting that all together. Uh, she's been fully remote as well, working really hard from home and she's, she's just been doing a great job regarding her, her side of things. So I'm very, very happy with where we're at with that. Another big program we got coming up is Thanksgiving time, so it's the Galva Wobble season. Um, so we are, you know, we're transitioning to a virtual 5K, um, as I'm sure everybody anticipated. Didn't really know the, the reception we were going to get, but tonight, uh, we hit a hundred and sixty-eight people who signed up to register to race. Um, the race takes place over the course of a week, starting Sunday and going through Thanksgiving week. So uh, we're excited. We're excited. People are still sticking with the tradition. Uh, maybe people just want their T-shirts so they can say they went every single year. Um, and if that's what it takes, that's fine with us. So uh, we're excited for that. We're, um, we're setting up, registration ends on Thursday. If anybody wants, watching wants to sign up. Um, southboroerect.com, registration's right there on our homepage. Uh, the registration does end on Thursday and then uh, running will take place Sunday through Saturday. And then we will post um, times if people decide to submit them to us as we requested the following Monday. And we will keep the tradition of, of crowning a winner, so we'll announce that on our social medias. So programming-wise, we have, um, we have, you know, kinda kicked back into gear, um, so, so we're good with that. Um, on the flip side of things, I, I'm sure anybody driving through town has seen that there has been a significant amount of activity on our fields, on our playing fields. Um, tonight, as of tonight, just about every single season has ended, uh, with the exception of soccer. Uh, they're making up a few uh, makeup games, kinda scattered throughout the week, uh, into the weekend. And then all leagues will be finished. Um, Sunday, I think we have one more men's league game at nine eleven and, and we'll be, we'll be all set. Um, our numbers were down regarding groups. Uh, we did see our staples of the town youth groups. Um, and a couple of our men's leagues and as well as private leagues that, that use our facilities. Uh, we did, you know, we did miss a whole bunch of them. There are a bunch of handful of leagues that, you know, couldn't get the numbers because of everything and, you know, that was expected, that was fine. Uh, but uh, I think, let's see what we had. We had with youth soccer, with youth lacrosse, baseball. And then we actually had a, we were able to field a Southboro Northboro Girls softball team as well in town. We were able to bring them back, first time in a few years, so that was really good. Uh, we had a new tenant up at Lundblad Field with Central Lacrosse, which I think we've talked about at a past meeting. Uh, they traditionally use Saint Marks Field, um, and we worked with Saint Marks to, to welcome him into kind of our, our ecosystem of, of fields. And it was a great little partnership there. Um, and then we had one or two new adult leagues uh, down at, down at nine eleven. But um, like, the, the biggest point I want to make is a hats off to all these leagues. They really followed the COVID guidelines, you know, put out by the state to the T. Um, when they changed, as they did frequently, they adjusted. We, you know, we had a few issues here and there with a few groups. Those were, those were taken care of, no problem, but for the most part, you know, everybody, everybody kept their word. We did check in on them. Um, kinda surprised them. I don't know if they were thrilled with that, but anyway. Um, and uh, and everyone really, really did a great job, so, so I, I thank them for that. Um, moving on to, to capital, which I'm sure is gonna be the big discussion tonight. Um, first one, actually, I'm looking for some guidance from this board, if that's okay. Um, the basketball court now at Fayetteville Park is just about done, uh, finally. We were able to get that one off the desk. Uh, paving is all done. The post for the, the post for the, the backboards and hoops are in. Uh, lining began today. Uh, the gentleman who does our lining ran out of daylight, so he's gonna be back by the end of the week, once the weather warms up a little bit. Um, he just has to do the three-point arches, um, so we are well on our way of getting that complete. Uh, but I did make the decision right now not to put up the backboards and the hoops, um, due to the COVID numbers. Um, just going on in the state, the state does still classify basketball as a high-risk activity. Um, so we were a little weary on if we wanted to put up a brand-new court, you know, with the potential of, of attracting big crowds, uh, big groups of kids. As much as we want them out there, as much as we want them playing, we also wanna, you know, keep their safety in mind. So I wanted to hopefully get a sense from the board if you wanted to go forward, uh, with putting up those backboards and hoops, which we would probably put up by the end of this week. And open the court up next week, or if we are potentially looking to, to hold off through the winter and, and see where the, where the numbers were going. So I didn't know if anybody had a opinion on that. They could, they could share or guide.
Um, I have some thoughts, but I'll hear from other folks. You, you're talking, you're talking about a basketball player here, so I can, I can tell you where my thoughts are gonna go, but anyone else want to weigh in first?
Yeah, I, I'm concerned again about the state guidelines and so forth, so I think we need to be careful about uh, creating an opportunity for folks to gather. And exercise in ways that I think are pretty well documented can spread COVID. So I, I guess I'd, I'd vote for caution on this one.
I agree with the caution. I, I will just tell you, I mean, I, I'm at Woodward all the time and I think for the most part. Um, you know, whether, whether it's a Sunday morning or a Thursday evening, um, uh. Kids are wearing masks and adults are down there with masks on, working with the kids and the like. I guess we can always shut it down. Um, I, I just, I, my inclination is to trust people. And to, and, and rather than us assume that they're, they're not gonna adhere to guidelines, give them the opportunity to adhere to guidelines. And if they do, great, and we've got another, you know, recreational, you know, tool that, that they can use and get outside. Um, and if, if, if it's abused, then we shut it down. I guess that, those are my thoughts.
Shut it down by removing the backboards and.
No, I, I just, don't allow access to it.
Yeah, in the past, when we first had our, our shutdown initial in, in uh, March and April, we tied up the nets, so, and that prevented. So worst case, that's the, you know, that, that's what we could do, but that's fine. I'm, I'm completely okay with that. I just wanted to make sure we were all.
Well, it was just me. That was, that was just me and, and, and Sam is contra, so.
One and one, it's tied.
Are the nets up still at the Woodward basketball court?
Yes, they are.
So people can go and play there? So it's, seems inconsistent to have. Uh, you know, places, you know, the ability to go to Woodward to play, but not at Fayetteville. I think there ought to be consistency one way or the other. I get, so the guidelines from the state, does it specifically mention basketball or is it more?
Yeah, it's classified, it's classified as a, as a high risk. It has since the, the start of everything in March and it hasn't, hasn't moved.
Okay.
Because of the contact aspect of it, if there is a, you know, a big pickup game going on, so.
Yeah. And heavy breathing level of activity. Yeah. Well, you know, and I think we're at the time of year, weather-wise, when we're probably unlikely to have huge pickup games gather anyways. But still, I. I think we're, we're running a risk if we're not advocating consistency with the state guidelines as well. That's my, that's my opinion.
And Tim, if, if, if there were a problem, I mean, what, what, you know, believe me, my, my, my sons have complained bitterly about this in the cities where they live. Um, they've just taken rims down. They've just taken rims down. If, 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 if the guidelines aren't adhered to, you don't have to take the backboards down. You don't have to take the poles out. You just take the rims off. Heck, I put up a sign saying if, you know, please adhere to the guidelines. If you don't, the rims are gone. But, but I guess my inclination is to, is to, is to trust people on the front end. And don't take it away from them until they abuse the trust. But again, that's, that's me. That's, that's, that's one of five.
Works for me. So if, if, if that's the view of it, then that's great. So.
Is there a strong disagreement with what I just said? I guess not. Okay.
I think it's, it's right next to a playground that's getting utilized. I haven't experienced any issues there and there also are no lights at Fayetteville, right? So we're just talking about the time until four thirty in the afternoon. So I, I think. If, if, if Woodward's open and this is open and we hear about issues, then I think we just need to be prepared to take action if, if it presents a problem.
Yeah, in a heartbeat, heartbeat, take the, take the rims down. But, but I would, I would, it sounds like we're, we're willing to give folks a chance.
I'll nominate Marty as the enforcement officer.
There was, there was a time when I could have been the enforcement officer down there on a basketball court, but, but my knees, my knees long ago said, stop that.
I'll just give you a striped shirt and a whistle. That's all you need.
All right.
Okay, great. So that.
Capital item number one. That's it, right? That's the only capital item you guys are dealing with right now?
Yeah, we're good. So have a good rest of your meeting. No, so, you know, this, this meeting came originally was lined up pretty well because we were, the other thing is the lighting projects, obviously. We were expecting approval last night at the planning board meeting. That was our third continuance hearing. Of our lighting projects. But unfortunately, we did not receive the approval as we anticipated. The reason for that. Being that the planning board did not receive their third-party peer review results from Fussin O'Neil, who's the contracted vendor with the town. Like they did the first time around. We were a little disappointed. We were very disappointed that, that they did not receive that. Our first submittal to Fuss O'Neil resulted in a, a pretty deep dive by their firm, over a hundred points that they made. Between the two projects, Neary. And Finn at the baseball fields. And this one, you know, what we submitted back was that review that they, they gave us. With a line-by-line explanation of how we addressed it, where it's on the plans, where it's reflected. So we thought it should have been, should have been easy, but, you know, we, we don't know what's going on in their office, so it, it is what it is. So we were very disappointed in that. We're not anticipating anything earth-shattering coming out of that. The second one around, if anything, we're, we're expecting a clean bill of health because, like I said, line-by-line, everything was addressed. And if there are any additional questions regarding those lines of the planning board hearings, we were able to address them easily. So, so again, that was super disappointing. So where we're at now is. On the thirtieth of this month, we have requested a extension. Per their request, really, to give them one, one more go at it so that they can receive the Fussin O'Neil report. See that there's nothing really outstanding and then take a vote. I will say here tonight that. You know, we are not, as a commission and as the department and, you know, the proponent of the project. We are not going to agree to any more extensions. We, we would like the whole firm on the thirtieth to, to receive a. You know, a vote by the board to receive a judgment on this project. And that really comes down to time and money. We, we've invested quite a lot of extra money to get where we are since. You know, just this year, since March, when we really dug our feet in and, and got this project where they wanted it to be. And, you know, every time our, our contractor comes with his subs, that's costing him money as well. So, you know, we are overly confident on what we have put forward. We have not received from the planning board really anything. That is challenging the, the validity of what we're putting, putting forward when it comes to, to the site review of the plan, both electrical, you know, and site plans, physical of, of everything. We've made. A, a good amount of concessions on the variance of, of use. Baseball has made a lot of concessions as well, specific to their. End of the project and we just feel like we are at a place now where we need to move forward on this. So we wanted to let you all know that we will be taking a, a firm, firm stand come that thirtieth meeting. Which of note is past the sixty days that they had from the opening of our hearing. Hence the extension. So they have gone over their sixty days, their original sixty days. So again, that one more day, that thirtieth, that's where we're going to hopefully get our vote of approval. And then we're going to, we're going to move forward. And I, I'll invite Jen in if she wants to, to add anything to that, as she's obviously been at all these meetings by our side.
Yeah, I think I will just. Maybe call it the fact that like the amount of work that Tim has put into this and the amount of time and effort. For like really, I think this started a year ago, Tim, you started digging into where the status of this project was and. Started really working with the town planner in Ja- I think January, December, we started turning in documents and paperwork and getting feedback. So despite the fact that the, the public session with the town planning board just started. This fall, Tim's been in the weeds with this, with them for a very long time. So it has been a significant amount of effort and back and forth. And I do, from, from observing from the sidelines and, and being like there to back up Tim, like he has, I think, gone above and beyond on this. And we have done, really done a lot to be able to meet the requests of the planning board and deliver exactly what they want, whether or not. You know, we might think we need to do something. We've been doing it. So, so I do, I fully support Tim and we agree that we're really hoping for a decision on the thirtieth. So we can move this forward. And it's, it's one of the last projects that's been hanging over the department's head for, for years that we'd like to be able to wrap up and get out there. So.
Okay, I, I, I am going to hold my powder a little bit on this. Just because I, I, I need to in some respects. I'm completely supportive of what you both said. The one thing I will say is that, that. I, I guess I'll, I'll say two things. Number one, I thought that Kristen had a terrific. Idea last night and, and there really needs to be a postmortem after this about really what the hell happened here. And so really so that we understand and the town understands why a project that was approved at a town meeting in twenty seventeen. Still is waiting for approval. And again, my, not to ascribe blame, but so that it doesn't happen again. And the second thing is related to that is this just makes everybody in town. Look like Keystone Cops. It really does. The idea that a, that a four-light project. That's going to benefit kids, boys, girls, parents who get a chance to see them play. And we as a town can't get it done is quite frankly embarrassing. So I'm going to go to you, Mr. Shea.
Thank you. The comments from the reviewer from Fussin O'Neil, do it, have we received them yet or are they still to be submitted?
To be, we have not received the second response. So we, to date tonight, I have not received from our second submittal, no.
Okay. And I was not able to watch the meeting last night, unfortunately. Has there been any indication when? The consultant thinks they will be able to have the responses to you?
When I spoke to the planning department, the response they got was by end of this week. I, I spoke to them again today, kind of imploring that. There be some pressure as if for some reason there is something we need to change. We need time to do that. So I think what we came up with is if we didn't hear by noon tomorrow. Another attempt at the contact and directly the push along was going to be made by the planning department.
Okay. And hopefully the planning board is on board with pushing the consultant. As much as possible to get this review done and get it back. Again, recognizing that. While the meeting isn't until the thirtieth, there's something called Thanksgiving that happens next week that, you know, kills half of next week. And then you're the Monday after Thanksgiving where, where you have your hearing. So if there is something that you need to address, you need time to, to address that. I completely understand that. I did look at on the, on the website, it seemed as though. Planning board's next meeting wasn't scheduled until December fourteenth and I was leery that they were going to push till December fourteenth. Did they, from the meeting last night, was there an agreement to, to go to the thirtieth and establish a new meeting date?
Correct. Yeah, this was a, a call for a special meeting. This, this also includes. The barn project that, at Chestnut Hill, that will be on that meeting as well. So they, they call it a special to, to get this going.
Yeah. So thanks to the planning board for doing that. But again, hopefully. All involved, all parties involved are pushing as hard as possible to get. The responses tomorrow, just to. Give us the, you know, the, the opportunity to have the hearing on the thirtieth. Go through, hopefully there aren't any discrepancies, as you mentioned. There aren't any continued. Issues that need to be addressed and let's just. Get this resolved.
Thanks, Brian. Mrs. Dyers?
Yes, thanks, Tim, and, and for the update. I've been following this, seems like for a long time myself. And share some of the frustration certainly. I saw the planning board meeting. Last evening and I was cautiously encouraged. I think they seem to be focused on getting any remaining issues identified. And my sense is that once the Fussin O'Neil report is, is provided, there will be opportunity for some offline discussion. To resolve any open issues at that point. So by the thirtieth, everything should be at least well-understood, if not agreed upon. So I have my fingers crossed that that will all work out as expected and I'm hoping for. An approval at that point, but it is long overdue and be great to get this finished. So thanks for your continued efforts on this. No questions.
Thanks, Sam. Ms. Brashill.
Thank you. Tim, thank you. And Jen, thank you for the updates as well. I don't know what I can add to what, what Brian or Sam said. I mean, I, I think getting the comments to you guys as soon as possible is key. I mean, you have. Obviously, we need time to, to be able to go through the comments and, and with the holidays coming. So I hope you'll get them prior to the end of the week. I'm, I'm hopefully an optimistic looking, looking for that to happen for you guys. I am glad that there is a hearing on the thirtieth and, and you don't have to wait and hopefully. Again, fingers crossed it, it'll get resolved at that time and, and I'm hopefully optimistic about that as well. So thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Ms. Valenowski.
Thank you. And thanks for the updates, Tim and Jen. Tim, can you explain how the extension period works and what goes into deciding? You know, how long the extension goes and kind of the technicalities of that?
So the extension period was somewhat requested by the planning board that they wanted an extension for the meeting, which would be the thirtieth. And then five days out from the thirtieth allows them their decision period. So the thirtieth was the extension for the meeting. With a decision date of the fourth or fifth, whatever that Friday is. So, so a decision needs to be, you know, should be voted on a Monday and be handed down and filed by that Friday is my understanding.
Thank you.
All right. Jen or Kristen? And then again, there were, there was some indication early on that there might be some folks. In the public who want to comment on recreation stuff. Kristen or Jen? Anything else?
Hi, it's, it's Kristen. I'll just, I think it's important. We actually just get to the comments of the folks on the line. I think I, I made my position. Clear last night. I completely agree with you, Mr. Haley, on the need for a postmortem because. Something went off the rails, but even the past few meetings, it's just been frustrating where it feels like new information was coming up. We were repeating discussions, but again, I, I think I expressed that last night. We will, when this process is over. Revisit what happened, work together to improve the process, but why don't we just get to the folks in the audience?
I think maybe the only other thing I'd add, Mr. Haley, is that we, so we do have some exciting goals, but we could also. Like send that over as a memo or something like that. Another way to be able to share back because I know this is, this is a hot topic with the lights. So.
Okay. All right, Mr. Falco, I saw your hand up and it looks like Vanessa is a step ahead of me. So, welcome, sir. And if you could identify yourself and. I mean, I sort of know from having seen some of the meetings, your background, but give us some of that as well.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for a couple of minutes tonight. My name's David Fialco. I live at Ten Liman Street and I'm also the Vice President of Southboro Little League. For the past several years, I've been witness to and at times intimately involved in the process for the installation of the Little League lights. That were voted on and approved at town meeting nearly four years ago. Unfortunately, despite the dedication and an incredible amount of time, resources, money and work, the lights are still not close to being completed. This is in large part due to a planning board process that at its best case is a model of inefficiency and wasting taxpayer money. Tonight, I wanted to let the board know what has gone on, to the extent it doesn't know, although it seems the board is very up to speed on that, in the hope that it can be fixed in the future. On March twenty-third of this year, Town Council issued an opinion following a meeting with the Planning Board Chair. The Town Planner, DPW Superintendent, Recreation Director and the Chair of the Recreation Commission. In which he advised the light project would be subject to some form of site plan review. Stopping short of calling it a full site plan review, the Town Council stated in that opinion that it should be a, quote, reasonable site plan review. While I, I'm a lawyer by what, what I do and I disagree with that conclusion, those involved with it went with it and went along with it. Town Council encouraged, though, in that same opinion, encouraged the planning board to work with recreation to come up with specifically defined review. On the select issues that needed to be addressed. Although he acknowledged that the plans, new plans would need to be submitted, that exceeded the approved costs. He stated that these projects should be able to be reviewed and approved by the planning board. With adequate conditions to abate impact on the butters and allow use of the fields by town residents and others, as was anticipated by town meeting appropriation a few years ago. All in an expeditious manner. There has been nothing expeditious, though, about this project. In my planet, opinion, the planning board has not followed the recommendations from Town Council in March of this year. The site plan review has not been reasonable. There has never been a specifically defined review of select issues, rather there have now been three and there will be now a fourth meeting. Where. At each meeting, the planning board has raised brand-new issues, many of which are well outside the scope of anything reasonably related to lights and a review of them. While the recreation was able to secure funding for the newly required plans, the planning board process has required the retentions of engineers and architects. Who have had to appear at multiple meetings, all at additional cost, and each time the planning board was unprepared to raise all of their concerns. With these experts, despite us asking repeatedly for them. This has resulted in thousand dollars of, thousands of dollars of wasted money. In addition, the planning board has used Fussin O'Neil to review now two different sets of plans. And their alleged delay and not being ready last night is the reason that a fourth meeting is needed. Fussin O'Neil also is not free and the scope of what they are doing was not well-defined. The result was more waste. The point here is that the planning board has seemingly ignored what Town Council said and has done whatever it pleases whenever it wants. Credit goes to Tim Davis, though, and the Recreation Committee, who have been courteous, who have acquiesced throughout all of this process and have not raised. Very, very legitimate concerns that we're raising here today. It is perhaps fitting that yesterday, the day that we thought the lights were going to be approved. Was also the one-year anniversary of the passing of the late selectman, Brian Schifrin. And for those of you that know, these lights were from Brian Schifrin back in his days when he was on. Recreation and it would have been incredibly fitting that these got approved last night. There's no reason that we can't do them now and sooner. And I raise these points because I'm a citizen of this town and I believe that the planning board process, at least what I've seen of it. It's broken and it needs to be fixed. Kristen talked about a, a postmortem that was echoed by the board and I really do think. That should be done here so that this project can come to fruition and that future projects don't suffer from the wasted. Time, money and resources of people. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here tonight.
All right. Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else? Vanessa? I don't see any other hands up, but.
No, sir.
No, sir.
Hi, it's Kristen. Can I just add one thing, and I have to apologize because I um, temporarily got knocked out of the meeting by my own fault. Um, one thing that we would like to request, we requested this yesterday, I'm not sure if Dave might have just mentioned this, but we think it's imperative that Fussin' O'Neill start appearing at these hearings, because that seems to be a lot of the back and forth. Um, where consultants that are working with REC are coming to the table, they're appearing at those meetings, but yet, we don't have that same participation, and and clearly, that's leading to delays, so.
Hey, Kristen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there, just because that that is, some of what Mr. Falco talked about is um, within the sort of jurisdictional umbrella of the the Board of Selectmen, particularly in terms of the expenditure of town funds, and I'm particularly interested in in determining just how much additional money was spent um, during the course of this project. But in terms of Planning Board process, that's their, the Planning Board are independent elected officials, and they determine their process, is really very little, certainly at this juncture, that the Board of Selectmen can do about that.
Maybe just an encouragement.
All right, Vanessa, is there anyone else? I don't see that any other hands up.
I do not see anyone either.
Okay, uh, Tim and members of the REC Commission, thank you very much, and uh, good luck on November thirtieth. Uh, fingers crossed.
Yeah, we'll keep you updated. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. We are now ready to go to our Town Accountant and Finance Director. And while they're getting set, um, uh, I I will, I'll, I'll, I'll go through my roster, but I was thinking about for our next December one meeting, thinking about um, 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 maybe historical, um, open space and one other board or committee to come in. Uh, again, and I think I'm reading the the questions and comments from other members of the board. I find these incredibly helpful to uh, to keep up on on what our incredible volunteers or or and our and our staff in town are doing in in these various areas, and and it's good to hear it from the horse's mouth, so. With that, uh, are we starting off with Carla or with Brian?
Up to you. Who would you, who would you like to hear from the most?
I get to pick?
That's easy.
Car- Carla's name is first, so why don't we start with her? Hi, Carla.
You did.
I'm you. Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, we, I think Brian is gonna share his screen, I think, what did, or was I to talk about the FEMA cares or? I'm not sure.
So you should be able to share your screen at this point, Brian. If not, just let me know. Or whenever you're ready.
Yeah, let me see if I can do it. There we go.
Looks good.
Looks good. Why don't I take this part, Carla, and then you can, you can dive in later for the uh,
Follow-up.
FEMA, FEMA cares update, I know they want to hear about that also. Boy, so anyways, this, this, the purpose of this little presentation, uh, we had talked about before, um, giving basically four presentations a year based on quarterly um, revenue and expense activity. Um, so this is the first one that we're doing. Uh, hopefully, you know, if the format looks good, the data is good, we can keep doing this every three months, about the same time. I'll, I'll do a disclaimer, because I'm reminded that the June thirtieth report is um, compiled during the summer, which is a very crazy time. Um, so we may be a little late later, um, with that report than usual, but um, the rest of the report should be about, you know, about this time or so I will just, I'm not gonna read verbatim, because I don't like doing that with these, with these presentations, but um, I will and remember to give thanks. I didn't, I didn't want to forget that. Um, so this is, this is part of the receipt side of things for the first three months of the year, and as you know, as the board probably is aware, um, you know, one of our major two-million-dollar revenue sources, for the most part, isn't known until February or March, so that's unfortunate, but um, but it it will give some good indications of what's happening, and we put notes next to, you know, items that have changed from last year, just for little explanations. So as you can see, I, on the excise for uh, note A, I put February, March to twenty-twenty-two, is when we'll really know more information on that. The other excise is motel, uh, hotel tax, and we, it's just a timing difference. We got it a little later this year. So that was thirty-three thousand dollars, and uh, the fees and interest, a large account was paid. Um, permits were up, which was a good sign, we not, you know, from what I've seen, it's been a good summer with people doing little projects and renovations, and and so that was a good little uh, positive um, revenue source that I certainly was interested to see. And um, on the police detail, obviously, the um, last year was the, was a very busy year of police details. It's fairly busy this year, too, and it did pick up a little bit in October, so that gap closed a little bit for that month, so.
Brian, very quickly, the detail, the Main Street project, we're not, they didn't fall on the town, correct?
Correct, yes. Um, obviously, the rentals for the cell tower, we, we all know that issue, I don't want to go into that too much, but um, that will be dropping off this year, um, those payments. Um, the transfer station stickers, again, October was a little stronger, which you don't see, but that gap wasn't a huge gap anyways, but that gap has been closed a little bit. Um, as far as last couple items, there's no surprise, investment income uh, rates are, if you've ever tried to open a checking account or savings account recently, you know, rates are, or even CD uh, returns are very low. Um, also coupled with the fact that last year, we did have extra funding for uh, public safety building that now we don't have. So we've got a lot less money out there, and it's earning a lot less of an interest rate, so no surprise with that one. And then, you know, miscellaneous recurring monies are usually one-time weird-type monies, and last year, we had a little bit more significant um, collections in that first quarter than we did um, this year. So if you kind of put it all together, we're a hundred and eighty-four thousand down, which isn't great, but if you take out the timing differences and the one-time things, and and, you know, we knew the investment income was gonna be a factor, then it's, it's well under a hundred thousand dollars, which is a concern, but it's not, uh, you know, it's not horrible. So I think that's glass half-full, hopefully. And, you know, continue to watch that as um, time goes on. Um, again, just, I think we've got a few tax cases that may settle out in the next month or two. That should bring some good revenue in, um, and help on that side again, so um, we'll see. You know, it's a little early to 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 dive too deep into this, but it's not early enough to kind of take a little bit of a trend and see where we're headed, so. Um, we'll, we'll, um, we'll keep watching this. It's, it's a, you know, it's an important piece of the pie. So if anyone has any questions on that part of it, I'm happy to answer anything, or I can keep going and just take questions at the end.
No, let's break them down, Brian, and and um, Sam, I'm gonna go to you in a second, but my, I'm just gonna follow up on something you said, Brian. It it, you're, you're not comfortable sort of identifying that that, you know, down a hundred and eighty-four thousand represents a trend, or it could just be a bit of an anomaly that it's um, it's that amount after one quarter. It doesn't necessarily mean that when we sit here, you know, another quarter from now, that 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 it's gonna be down three hundred and seventy thousand?
That's correct to a point. I mean, I think, I think the investment income, we're definitely gonna be, you know, I don't see that turning around, um, so that, something like that particular item, we're probably not gonna be in a good place at the end of the year. Um, I'm obviously very interested in the auto excise, you know, auto excise. Um, but I just, we don't know where that's going, so I I can't, I can't really say yet. I I do know as far as the regular collections on a little bit of excise that we do in this quarter and everything, that you know, it's been fairly stable, um, but if, you know, if we suddenly find ourselves with that large first and second commitment come out, we're three hundred thousand dollars down, that's a problem. And unfortunately, that is, the timing of that is very close to town meeting, so um, we'll have to talk about that a little more, but um, your greater point is true. I, I, I was positive, again, about the permits and some of the other fees and the fines, some of the fines that dropped off, like, like library fines and everything, that they are a small area, it, you know, in respect to the total revenues, so um, you know, even though some of those may drop off, they're not gonna, not gonna hurt us too much. Um, but again, more to, more to keep an eye on.
Okay, Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. Thanks, uh, Brian and Carla. Um, I am very interested in seeing all the data, it's sort of overwhelming, a lot of numbers here, but uh, a lot there if you dig in. I was interested to see that dog fines are up a hundred percent so far this year. Clearly, it's an alarming trend.
The right direction.
The, the issue for me is that uh, it is interesting to dig in, but I'm also probably more interested in, you, you have uh, several summary slides, couple of summary slide on expenses and revenues. I'm really interested in in your collective assessment on what it is we should be paying attention to in here, and you've identified some of that. You've already touched on a few points that weren't in your summary slides. I think that, uh, at least for me, would be very valuable going forward to have a page worth of bullet points or something on observations that you see about what we should be concerned about, or here's a number that looks crazy, but you shouldn't be concerned about it for this kind of reason, sort of as a guide. We don't have to try to dig through, I think I understand a lot of this, but a lot of it I don't understand, so uh, sort of a, a more uh, pointed guide for here's what you worry about, here's what you shouldn't be so worried about, would be helpful going forward. Not, not in huge detail, but just on the sort of high-level things, but uh, this is helpful and delighted to see this uh, starting. I think I look forward to seeing this on a quarterly basis, so, thank you.
Ms. Brashil.
Thank you, uh, Frank and Carla, thank you for putting this together. My questions are actually on the expenses, and you haven't got to that slide yet, so I will gracefully just say thank you and and wait till we hit that part. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Ms. Malanowski.
Thank you, Brian and Carla. Um, I do have two questions. The rec field line on your first slide, um, is, are those fees related to fields other than nine eleven, and so nine eleven's excluded? Or is it also, is it only nine eleven?
No, I believe it's, and Carla can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's the other fields.
Okay, yes, nine eleven has its own fund, actually, that the revenue goes into.
So, yeah, this, do these fees go into the general fund, or do they go? Okay.
Yes.
And my.
All of those, all of these fees except water, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, correct.
And my second question is, and maybe I didn't see it on here, or maybe it's purposely not on here, is ambulance revenue, is that not on here because it's part of the ambulance fund?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Correct. We can, we can always add that, by the way, because that is a separate fund. Um, obviously, it's, it's an important fund, too. Um, I have no problem adding that in the future.
That would, if we could add ambulance and also water uh, from an enterprise fund, um, can we add that as well?
Water is actually.
It's on the bottom.
As you can see, water is a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars up, which is really good. Um, and I would think you'd expect that after the rates were adjusted, and the um, uh, summertime was very dry, so um, although those readings you won't see, I'm trying to think, the readings you will see, you'll see a little bit of that, but not, you'll actually see more of that next quarter. So, so water could be interesting to see next quarter.
Right, so, um, and I know this is getting into expenses, but did you include the water expenses in our packet?
I don't believe I did, actually. I don't think so.
You, for next time, please?
Yes, definitely, yep.
Yep.
Great. Thank you, those are my revenue questions.
Uh, and Mr. Shea.
So I was just gonna touch on the water, and you've explained part of it, obviously, the usage, um, also the increase in rates. I guess my question is, the, the change that we do have in the uh, revenue, I certainly would think that we would expect it. Is it in line with what we expected? Is it not as high as what we were, were expecting it to be? Is there still a concern with rates, having uh, just adjusted rates? Or do, do we think we're targeting okay with that?
So we had talked to the DPW Director just two days ago, and touched on a little bit of this, with, that wasn't really the purpose of that meeting, but we asked about it. And so these, these revenues that are being collected that you see here, and that are being um, done for the second quarter, are trending, if I understood correctly, and Carla or the town history can correct me if I'm wrong, but they are trending above what we thought, and again, that, I wouldn't be surprised, right, because people, A, are at home, and the um, drought conditions were pretty severe around here for the summer, so um, the flip side of the coin is she has to buy water, um, and she had to buy more water than anticipated, so there is some offset to that, but um, but the answer to your question is, yes, it is higher than than we had thought. And uh, one more follow-up on that, that um, we are toying with the idea of having some sort of um, regular, and and as we should, so, uh, regular rate reviews for the water accounts so that we can take into effect some of these fluctuations and um, some of the data that we have from the last rate study just needs to be refreshed a little bit, and um, DPW Director thought it would be pretty easy to get that updated for next year, so, or actually for even next, within next year, um, so um, we're looking into that.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ballantyne, back to you.
Okay, so now I guess we could flip to expenses a little bit. And um, obviously, you've seen the detailed expenses, I, I, I'm sure no one wants to go through those sixty pages. Um, but we did put some bullet points um, together of just observations, and some of this is probably similar to what uh, Mr. Stivers was suggesting, as like high-level little notes of what, you know, what's going on. Um, um, so that's at least a little bit of what we did here. Um, some things that, you know, um, you know, are just points to note, like the utility point, you know, it is on target, and everything looks good through Septa- uh, September, however, we have winter looming, which, you know, winter loves heat. Um, so we'll see how cold it gets this, during the season. Um, Town Clerk and the Board of Health, um, that, those are fairly self-explanatory. I don't think, and and again, Carla can jump in on this, but I don't think the Town Clerk has quite settled out of costs for the, for the um, recent election, so um, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to parse through those a little bit more. Um, Board of Health is obviously, you know, that's all COVID, and we can actually touch base on that when Carla talks about her FEMA and uh, cares little update in a few minutes. Um, so DPW, um, they have a few uh, items that we, again, spoke to the um, DPW Director, and there's just things that we want to that she gave us as little notes that has happened the past three months, or or, you know, little little ticklers that, things to keep an eye on, so we, we thought these three items we want to mention, um, you know, as, as items to, again, we'll have to update the board um, as we move into the second quarter, on how these things, you know, uh, start trending a little more. Um, it does look like, and I think it's on the next page or two, I think she may need it, well, it looks like she is gonna need a transfer at the end of the year for various reasons, but I'll, I'll get into that in the next page. Um, court judgments is just that little, i- it's not a little account, that's the money we paid to North Pro for our settlement, and. Court judgments is just that little, it's not a little account. That's the money we paid to North Pro for our settlement. And it's based on an interest rate that we do not know at the time of town meeting. And it happened to be where interest rates did tick up last year, very briefly, if you remember. They were actually climbing a little quickly for a month or two, and then they just dropped again. But it was enough where North Pro had a little bit more of a fee that we owed them this year. So that is going to be in the red. Not a lot of money, but just something, you know, by about $2,600. Here's the, you know, the second quarter, and this is the DPW note that I just wanted to let the board be aware of. Again, fevers and cares, we'll talk about in a second. But DPW, they, here's the issues that went on these first quarter with the hopper and DePietre Field and the recycling. And the recycling, I guess, is over double what she had budgeted for this current year. So that's about, if I'm my math, if I remember my math correctly, it was about $2,500 a month, and it's over $5,000 a month that she's spending. So that's $20,000, $28,000, $29,000, somewhere around there, that she could be she could be short this year. So we'll have more of an update on these, you know, certainly that item as the year moves along. But so clearly DPW is a department and that we will have to keep an eye on and update the board on. So I'll just mention these. I know we can talk, we can get questions for the expenses, too, but I think we know some format changes already. We've discussed, I don't know how the board feels about this. This was actually my idea to consider a layson quarterly. And the way I thought it would work is just informally sit down with a board member, and it doesn't have to be long. I mean, it could be 15 minutes on certain quarters. It could be a half hour, but to just go through the detail and get the issues that may be out there communicated. And then, you know, that person on the board would, you know, be well aware of them. And I think it would just help the communication, because some of this stuff is very granular. Again, we have 60 pages of expenses. We can't go through that in a public meeting, and no one want to, and no one want to watch it. But if we have a layson, I think it might help. And, you know, the board can decide how they feel about that. In the financial policy, this is just another little issue that this will lead into. Ms. Malinowski suggested a tweak to the financial policy regarding, you know, overspending line items and budgets. And, you know, the the town accountant, myself and Mark looked at that and, you know, agreed that that meant it, too. But that's where we stand. And if there's any questions about the expense items, Carla or myself, happy to, happy to try to answer them.
All right, why don't we start with Ms. Brashow?
Awesome. Thank you, Brian. So I went one of those granular people, and I did go through all 60 pages. So my, my questions are going to be reflective of those. And, you know, if there are some that, again, I don't know if you have the data in front of you, if you can't answer, if I could just get an answer on, I would appreciate it. My first question was on legal services. And it showed $15,954.33. But when I went back to town council's bills for July, August, and September, I came out to almost $21,000. So could you just explain what the difference may be?
It could be a timing difference, Lisa, I'm guessing.
Encumbered, maybe a payment of an encumbered bill?
Or payment, that's what was my second thing, or a payment of an encumbered bill, because it wouldn't, an encumbered bill wouldn't show on that report. Am I correct, Carla?
Right, it would not. Yep, but we can look into that, Lisa, and get back. What's the number you have?
$20,812.50. That was for July, August, and September. So yeah, that would be great. See, that was simple.
I know he did have an encumbered bill that we rolled from one year to the next. So I wonder if that's, but I'll confirm that for you, for sure.
Okay. My next question was on the town clerk on dog, other supplies, dog tags. It was well over what was budgeted, and I just didn't know if there was a reason why maybe we had under budgeted the prior year. It was $200 budgeted, and it was $1,150 spent at this point. And again, I don't want to put you on the spot, but these are just some of the questions I had. So
Okay, sure.
I have a feeling that's because he, the town clerk, issues those dog, yeah, those dog permits, they're not done annually like they were. They were a little off cycle. So I have a feeling it has something to do with that. But I can confirm it to you.
Okay, that's great. My next one is on code 192, public buildings. I just wondered, there was fire headquarters, building maintenance, and fire department contracted services. There was nothing budgeted, but there were expenditures for those two items. And I couldn't see where it may have been lumped into something else. So I just didn't know if this was something that maybe wasn't budgeted for, was unforeseen. And again, I, it was $1,048.86. Yeah, it's on page 27, Carla, if that helps.
Yeah, I see it. I see. I don't know offhand what it is, but I
That's fine. If we could find out an answer to that, that would be great.
Sure.
And also I don't know why I did this one, so I'll just, I'll move on from that one. And I have two more. Under Why did I do this one? Sorry. Oh, council on aging. So it's not showing under salaries any part-time hours? And I know that Lorraine is working. So could we just follow up on that? I know that she's still doing stuff and she works part-time. So unless I'm missing something, if we could just follow up on that. Because it's not showing anything for part-time.
He's probably being ordered as full-time, I'm guessing.
And that may be totally the case, and that's fine. I just wanted to follow up on that one. And lastly, was under the library. Under computer equipment repair maintenance, they're at like 99.55% of their, what was budgeted? Is that normal going into first quarter? Or if that was just something unforeseen, potentially?
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I can, I can check with Ryan and Tom, and I can let you know, Lisa, for sure.
Thank you. That's it from my perusal of the 60 pages. So thank you.
Ms. Malinowski.
Okay, so I did the same thing. But I did have a chance to touch base with Brian and Carla, and I just, I didn't get responses back from them. I just wanted to highlight a few of my observations and some of their responses, just in case other board members want to know. So Norfolk didn't have any expenses, but there is a student, we just haven't gotten an invoice from them yet. So that will be coming, even though it shows zero. And for computer, back to computer repair that Lisa brought up. So library was one of those areas that had a decent amount of their budget already taken. MIS and police, and I believe Board of Selectmen were also under there. So I think as we're, you know, going down a plan for IT and what that department's going to look like, I think it may make sense for us to look at having computer repair be in the IT budget so that we can better track what's getting fixed, or what needs to get fixed within, within the IT department. So Mark, I'm not sure how that is playing into kind of your IT plan, but it definitely seems like we've used a decent amount of those line items within each department so far.
Yeah, I think that obviously that plan is still in development, you know, and I was going to talk a little bit about that under my town administrative report. I think, and Carla can correct me if I'm wrong, because I think we looked at this today. But I don't know that the the titles of some of the, you know, some of those are accurate in terms of the selectmen and computer maintenance, because I believe that's a maintenance agreement on the postage machine. And it is computerized. So technically, I guess it falls within the four corners. But, you know, I try not to bother Tom a whole lot about anything. So I'm not sure he's fixing my computer enough for it to generate, you know, that much, that much of an expense. So like I said, I, so I think sometimes it kind of falls within the box, but it's not, it doesn't necessarily mean it's the same type of expense. So I think to the extent we can provide some more clarity to that, that may, that may avoid that.
Okay. And also, if we are anticipating that over 50% of the budget's used in Q1, or if we think that it may be an issue if something else goes wrong, you know, was this an unforeseen thing, or we pay for something in Q1 every year anyways? So we know, you know?
With regards to us, it's a maintenance agreement. And so that's an, that's an intended payment. So
Okay.
Most of the library was delved, that I looked, and almost all that payment was delved. So I don't know if they bought equipment, right? You know, the first quarter, like you mentioned, and maybe it's just skewing it. But that's just an aside.
Okay. And back to the legal bill. So I was wondering if there were a list of expenses that were coming in arrears, so that, you know, if you're looking at the percentages and you see some things at like 12, I think the schools were at like 12%. Are we, do we have expenses that don't actually hit this report in Q1, but were, but and we should be showing, not that we should be showing, but it's misleading that only 12% of the school budget was used in Q1? And we, but it's a known that that expense hits in the next month. I think if we can just work through those areas that we expect to see payments in arrears.
Payments in arrears.
Yeah, like, like, so, so my question for the legal, to kind of piggyback off Lisa, was I was expecting to see over $20,000 for Q1. But it was, I think you had it as 15,000 or 16,000. I was like, oh, maybe the September invoice was paid in October, and so it's a month lag.
Yeah, that's typically how, yeah.
Okay, so if, so when you're looking at the percentages, I just don't want to be, I just don't want to miss something that says a certain percentage, but we're actually behind in payments. Do you know what I mean? So if we can just identify the areas that we, that we know, and I think, Brian, maybe there was something in your department that you know is going to be a two-week lag for payment. If we could just be, you know, not get too comfortable with the percentages, I think, and know where we're at. That was one of my other comments. And then postage, we use 50% of the postage budget for this year. And do you know if part of that will be part of the election number that the clerk will be looking for, for reimbursement from CARES?
I'm assuming, and I also have a journal entry from recreation, because they use some postage as well to put back in there. For that, that will take, you'll see in October. So, yes, but I haven't, again, I'm kind of giving Jim a minute to, you know, collect himself after the election. But I do, actually, he gave us a good memo that, tonight, Brian, right? He said the state is going to cover the box, the Dropbox that is out in front, in front of the town hall for voting. They let him know that they were going to cover that. So that has nothing to do with postage, but
Good news.
That's great. Okay.
Yeah, every little bit helps. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I just want to end with Brian and Carla. I think this was excellent, and this was exactly what I was expecting from from you, especially for this first go-around. So I real, I know this probably was not an hour task for you to put together, but I certainly appreciate the effort that went in here. And so thank you very much for doing this work.
Appreciate it.
Brian, before I go to you, just one question on the, on the the items where there's a lag, or we know there's a hit coming because of the way, just the way the budget flows, for instance, for the schools or otherwise. Is the simplest way to address that just with a footnote, as opposed to trying to, to, you know, speculate on what the number is likely to be? Just drop the footnote explaining? In other words, that, that would be sufficient for me, just this, this is why this number is X, but you can't simply extrapolate, multiply it by four.
Yeah, I, I agree. If that's straightforward enough for you, sure.
Yeah, I think if we can just denote, I mean, obviously, the school budget we know is not at a 12% spend in Q1. So just as long as we're not like, oh, we have a big savings coming in the school
Oh, yeah.
I think that's what I'm, and then if we know that councils in third invoice isn't going to hit that quarter, just now, it's only going to be an issue for Q1 in theory, if you have a continuous lag.
Right.
But I think you're always going to be a month behind.
Right.
And I, and I think you have those issues, too, with regards to revenue. You know, Brian identified it tonight, motor vehicle excise. We're not going to know until town meeting, you know, really, are we doing as well as we hope we would? You know, so there are things like that, that, you know, we need to do. And I think Brian can add another four or five slides of footnotes just to kind of, you know, identify some of those things.
No. All right, Mr. Shea. Sorry for hijacking.
I like the idea of the summary slides to start, you know, there are things that, you know, are of concern to you that you specifically want to bring to our attention. And I can see those as the year progresses, as you go through each of these meetings. Like, maybe there's something on the watch list right now, but you know, three months from now, we were able to mitigate it, you know, in this way, as an update at the next meeting. But, you know, through the course of the next three months, this has all of a sudden arisen as an issue. And this is what we're watching, just so we can track it as we keep meeting through the year, on both the revenue and expense side. I think that would be helpful. And one other thing with respect to the DPW items that you had addressed. So clearly, the breakdown in the hopper is a result of the increased tonnage. And the increased tonnage is clearly a result of people being home. And that's clearly a result of COVID. So that's all CARES reimbursable, correct? It's good. A facetious comment, but maybe let them say no, instead of us say no. That's something to consider.
Good point.
And with respect to those numbers, though, I would just say you know, remembering how everything played out, you know, so March is when everything shut down. That's really when we were finalizing budgets for this year. So DPW was one group in particular, particularly with the transfer station waste and the increase in water that, you know, we hadn't seen the effect of people being home at the time this budget was put together for this year. So you know, so I think that we need to be cognizant of that with Karen, and I think we need to work with her if reserve fund transfers are required. Likewise, I was appointed the Board of Selectmen liaison for DPW. I know Andrew, looks like he's online. He was the, is the advisory liaison as well. We're meeting with Karen on Friday, and I just think it's one of the things that we should discuss is making sure that whatever budget we propose for DPW for this year does take those factors into account, because I think people are still going to be home. They are still going to be around. So we should, you know, properly project for the amount of water we need to buy tons that we're going to need to treat at the transfer station. And, you know, that may be one budget that sees some differences from the current year's budget, and there will be good reasons for that. So that's all.
Thanks, Brian. Mr. Stivers.
Thanks. I already made my point, I guess, about the overall summary pieces. I'm okay on the detailed numbers. I'd add one comment to Marty's suggestion about footnotes or comments relative to things that may be subject to timing differences. I think there's a useful cut here in terms of scale of an issue. So I guess I'm less interested in stuff that appears to be off track, but it's a thousand bucks or a couple thousand dollars, something like that. I defer to the detail folks on that kind of stuff. So I would look, be more interested in a threshold number, a few thousand dollars, or five, or 10, or whatever the right number is for things that are worthy of detail. for things that are worthy of, uh, detail. And that would at least be helpful to me to sort, and other people may have different, different thresholds. But I think that could be a useful way to slice the, the reporting. So again, good job and, um, very helpful with the summary comments. Thanks.
All right, uh, Brian, or is this, uh, Carla for the next subject?
Yes.
All right. So all yours.
FEMA CARES. So talk about that. Um, the last time we spoke, we had not filed for reimbursement yet. And, um, in the month of October, we filed the CARES reimbursement and the FEMA reimbursement. I'd like to give a big shout out to Lieutenant Neil Spazey, who has much FEMA experience. And he's been super helpful in the process for FEMA. Um, we did receive, um, CARES money. Um, they had a really quick turnaround. And, um, basically there's a lot of moving parts. These are two federal sources of funds and they're both handle, they handle a lot of things very differently. And the, um, the laws and guidance that's still kind of evolving, um, it's kind of like building the plane while you're flying, you know, and we're finding our way. Um, but we did receive our first round of CARES money and that amounted to, um, $55,487. Um, the full reimbursement that went was $138,938. And with CARES, it's kind of, there are different categories and some are covered at 100% and some are covered at 25% because the theory is FEMA will cover the other 75%. We're going back and forth with FEMA right now. Um, and it's, it's typical within the process of, you know, they, you apply them and they ask for more detail or they ask for specific things. And what they're really looking for now is that, um, that all these COVID expenses are tied to an emergency protective measure, um, versus, uh, if it's a major declaration, Neil taught me all this. So he knows all the, the bingo, but, um, the emergency declaration is kind of like very widespread. But, um, which I think COVID is widespread, but in the FEMA eyes of things, they have deemed this emergency, um, emergency protective measures. So they're kind of pushing back on several of the, um, expenses that we anticipated them covering at 75%. And I've talked with other folks in other towns and it's very similar, even like PPE for the schools. If there wasn't an outbreak of COVID at schools, FEMA saying, you know, it wasn't an emergency protective measure. So they're pushing back. So we plan on whatever FEMA denies, um, applying for CARES in the next round, which would be round three, um, for those, you know, to cover those expenses at 100%. Um, CARES sends you money upfront and then does all of their compliance auditing after the fact. So there is a chance that during the audit, which will happen down the road, they will deem something ineligible. And then we would owe money back to the granting authority. So we're trying to be conservative and thoughtful in, um, what we are requesting for reimbursement. And also in the, in the back of our mind, there's a lot of talk from, um, federal legislators about being able to use CARE money as revenue replacement, which would be very helpful to many cities and towns because everybody's suffering from, you know, revenue losses right now. So, um, we're waiting for the next round of guidance to come out. I actually have a, a call tomorrow, um, that I'm going to be on. And then, um, Neil sent me something tonight about a FEMA webinar that's next week. There's constantly things and information that's changing and, um, being updated. Right now, the end of, end of this, um, CARES coronavirus fund is December 30th, not December 31st, December 30th. And, uh, you know, we're assuming that the COVID isn't going to go away on December 30th. We all know that. So we're hoping there will be an extension with regard to spending the funds. Um, but we're kind of sitting tight with that. Um, but the expenses could be, you know, they could categorically be eligible, but they really have to meet three criteria to be, uh, uh, you know, deemed CARES eligible expenses. The first one is it must be a necessary result at, I'm sorry, necessary as a result of COVID. It has to be unbudgeted as of March 27th. The expense has to be incurred between March 1st and December 30th. And the town must receive the benefit of the good, goods and services by December 30th. And the fourth thing is we have to have the proper documentation. Um, that's what the call tomorrow is on about compliance and risk mitigation and, and documentation. So, um, it's really kind of a, an adventure. Um, it's, they all have different templates and different, um, ways to, they want information. I, I, I thought you kind of just cut and paste and that doesn't really work. They're, they're all, they're both pretty unique. Um, but we did file, we did receive money. We're going back and forth with FEMA. And the expenses we anticipate, um, with regard to CARES coming down the pike is the, um, mortgage and rental assistance program that is going on now. Lisa and Chelsea are involved in that and did a lot of work to get that up and running along with the emergency fund, um, folks, I believe, which, um, we're, we're working through that right now. And the schools are looking to replace some Chromebooks that they're having trouble with, uh, to the tune of about $48,000. Those are some, some big items that I'm aware of. Um, and I've also let the departments know if, if there's anything else, you know, coming down the pike. December 30th isn't that far away, so we can chat about it, um, you know, just to keep me in the loop of what they, what they are planning on for CARES. So any questions? That's kind of a lot of information.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I, I've, I've got a couple and it has to, it has to do with a conservative versus aggressive approach, but I'll, I'll save that till the end. Maybe I'll start off.
Okay.
Chelsea.
Thanks, Carla. Um, so I just want to make sure I understand where you're at with the rounds of CARES. So round one, we got $55,000 out of $138 that you applied for. Is that right?
Yes. Well, the, what they do is they have you, um, apply for the, you know, put in the full expenditures and then they calculate, um, you know, what is reimbursed at 100%, what's reimbursed at 25%? And that totaled the 55 for eight seven. So we got everything that we intended to get.
Okay. And did we apply for round two yet?
So what, the round one, um, for CARES was actually, the, the due date was in June.
Okay.
And that application didn't happen in South Park. So we applied for round two, but our round two covered March through September. So we didn't miss out on anything. Yeah.
And then round three is the 12:30 deadline.
Yes. Yeah. They haven't announced when any, you know, timing for that. Um, and then there's, there's a recording for that. But it's like a separate thing, like you apply first and then the recordings is also a separate transmission. So we have done both the application and the, and the reporting transmission for round two for.
So with, with the anticipation that we're going to see COVID numbers going up over the winter months, do you, have you seen, um, expenses come through with the departments being proactive, getting PPE? Um, or the fire department getting preventative equipment, um, that they need or anything like that?
Um, I, I have not, like the departments are pretty well stocked, uh, my, from my understanding, um, and Neil's understanding is that the departments and the, the town is pretty well stocked as is. Actually, as of September 15th, FEMA has sent out a guideline that they are not covering, um, any PPE for anything beyond, um, the public safety departments, like schools, you know, town buildings, other, other employees, they're not going to cover. They're just covering PPE for the further funders, public safety.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, folks. I just, like I said, I'm a, I'm a technical wizard and, uh, my wizardry caught up with me. So, um, Ms. Malinowski, you're done.
Yes, she said she was.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. Uh, Mr. Shea.
All right, thanks. So Carla, thanks. Uh, and I'm sure it's my internet connection that's been going in and out all night, uh, for little bits. But, uh, the, the PPE that you said for public safety folks, that's FEMA that's only covering that or?
Yes, well, they would cover 75% of it.
75%, okay.
Yeah, in essence, CARES would cover the other 25%.
Got it. Okay. Um, so no other questions, I guess, other than, I guess I would encourage you, you know, certainly if there are expenses that we have already incurred and we can tie them to COVID-related expenses, I would be as aggressive as we possibly can and, you know, make them, make them say no, you know? I guess I had a, you know, bosses, we would put proposals together who would say, you know, if they, they accept this proposal that you give them, then you know, you didn't ask for a high enough fee. So if they say yes to everything, then maybe, maybe there's a few more things we could have dug out and put in there as well. So just, again, and we, I, we need to be respectful of the process and not be, you know, putting in things that are completely out of the norm. But let's, go ahead.
Um, even with things like the, uh, Brian for his office got a new, new Dropbox. There was an old, you know, 40-year-old Dropbox outside the town hall. And it didn't really fit under the categories of, you know, their Schedule A, which kind of like lays out every category that they, that they deem as the possible ones. Um, I can email the state specifically. They, they have a website, um, that you log on to when you actually send them a question. And I got an okay, you know, for Brian's mailbox. Cause if we, you know, we can send items to CARES and they can send us all the money. But then the, we run the risk at the end of having to send the money back to them and having an unfunded liability. So if it's something kind of out of the box, I'm happy to, you know, check in with the state and see how they feel about it. Um, but I, I can want to be a little bit conservative because I don't want to, to get caught on the other end, you know?
No, I get that. I get that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Stivers.
Thanks. And, uh, thanks Carla and Brian. Sounds like people have been working hard on this one. Uh, following, uh, Brian's comment, uh, about the transfer station possibility.
Yeah.
It's, I think, um, always interesting to see what everybody else is doing. Do we have any visibility into what other towns are applying for? That might be interesting to look at to see if there's something that people are pushing for that we haven't thought of in some way. I gotta believe people are out there pushing the boundaries in a variety of ways that we don't necessarily want to push beyond. On the other hand, um, there might be some things out there in the world that people have thought of that hasn't, haven't occurred to us. I'm not sure how you get a look at that, but I gotta believe there's some way to, uh, connect with somebody on the backend of this process to see what's going on in terms of the application. So I would encourage you to at least think about that and see if we can find out what's going on with other towns and get ideas for that. But otherwise, let's keep pushing and I'd be, I'd be eager to, to push hard on the front end. I don't mind so much about a liability that we have to pay back later. If we get half of what we ask for in the gray zone, uh, it's better than none of it. So that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Sam. Um, Ms. Brashow.
Good evening. Good evening again, Carla. I, I, I want to thank you. I, I know how daunting th- this task must be. I, I can't even try to imagine navigating, you know, the federal programs. And, um, I know you have been extremely helpful to us with the rent and mortgage program and, and, and your input was so valuable. So I, I thank you for everything that, that you and Brian are doing. And, um, I, I have the utmost faith that, that you are certainly on top of this. And, um, I only have one question, and this, this may have been given to us prior. Um, Mark, was, was, what was submitted to CARES, um, supplied to the board, what we were looking to be reimbursed for?
I'm sorry, what do you?
I don't, I don't.
Okay. So the, the $138,000 that was submitted to CARES, do we, you know, do we have access? Or was that shared with the board just so we know what was submitted and what we are looking for reimbursement for?
I don't know if the actual submittal forms were provided to you, but that's easily done.
Okay. I was just curious, you know, what, what you think would qualify and what wouldn't. That was all.
I mean, I, I think it's, I, I think it's easy to, um, like I said, I spent, you know, probably 15, 20 minutes, you know, with Carla one day just to kind of get a little bit more of a primer on some of this. And, and when you look at the worksheet, Lisa, it might be very illustrative. You know, I'm kind of a, I, I've got to have it in front of me. I've got to look at it. Um, and it shows you this type of expense. Here's the reimbursement. You know, it's 25%, it's this and that. Um, and, and, you know, it, so I, I think that might be helpful. So yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, Carla can send out, you know, the forms that, that were submitted for reimbursement for both CARES and FEMA.
Yeah, just again, just, just curious what, you know, what was submitted and what went into it. And, um, and again, thank you for everything.
Not a problem, not a problem. Um, Mr. Stivers, to your point about, um, checking out and seeing what other, other folks are doing. I'm actually, um, I have a membership in the Mass Municipal Auditors and Accountants Association, and we have a list serve. And people have been posting a lot of, a lot of things on, on that. So you kind of get a sense of what's going on in towns. I've also been talking to a lot of other town accountants that, that, that I know from my years in accounting and kind of bounce some things off each other. And there's also, um, posted online, the, the Division of Local Services, there's a frequently asked questions, um, list that's, that probably up to probably 50 questions now. There's, there's many more questions than what they post, but it is helpful to kind of see, you know, what people are asking and, and what the, what the question, what the answers to the questions are. So, um, I am trying to find out as much as I can, to be honest, to, you know, be responsible, but to get, you know, money for South where, where, where we can.
Perfect. You're two jumps ahead of me. Thanks very much. That's comforting.
And I'm just going to follow the last thing for me is, is the, the aggressive conservative. Why would it be an unfunded liability? In other words, because we can only seek reimbursement for actual expenditures. So we've already got that expenditure. And then the question is whether or not we seek reimbursement for it. If we seek it and get it, it's, I, I think what you described is if, if we don't get it, there's no issue about liability at all. We asked for it and didn't get it. The concern is if we ask for it, get it, and then at some point down the line, there's an audit and they determine that, notwithstanding the fact that you got it on the front end, we're going to take it away from you at the backend. Do I have that right?
They, yeah.
That's for CARES.
Yeah, that's for, for the CARES. That's for that big, almost $900,000, you know, that, that number that people see, 896 or whatever that's, you know, for South Row. They, if you apply, they'll give you the money upfront, but they will do a compliance audit. And if it's, if it's a big enough amount, it'll be, um, a single audit, which is more detailed than your, than your annual audit. And if they don't deem all the check boxes COVID, they'll take the money back and you'll owe money back to the federal grant authority.
Okay. I get that, but that would have been money that we, that, that, that's, that's an expense we would have had to deal with anyway. Regardless of whether or not we had, so.
Well, as long as the board's aware that that, that that could happen, that we could get money and then we could end up sending it back after the fact.
I mean, it sounds like you're doing, you, you, you know, you're doing all the right things in terms of taking the temperature of, of, of what's going on with other communities and with the frequently asked questions and the like. But, but, you know, going back to Brian's point about the, uh, the transfer station, I, I guess my inclination is. Brian's point about the, the transfer station, I, I guess my inclination is that those are expenses regardless of whether or not we seek and get reimbursement. It's, it's, and if it's money out of pocket on the front end or if it's money out of pocket because we were aggressive and at the end of the day it didn't work out, I don't see it, it's, it's, it's coming out of the same pocket, it just doesn't strike me. Again, as long as it's not of, of, you know, an unreasonable or done in, in, in bad faith or only quasi-good faith, but if it's a reasonable good faith determination that it falls into the, the, you know, the, the CARES bucket, I guess I, I would err on the side of, of not being so conservative.
But, but Marty, I think the key thing is that we shouldn't spend it until it's resolved. So I, I view that as sort of a contingent liability. I'd, I'd book it and count on it, but until the final audit, we certainly shouldn't spend it or at least some portion of it that we think will be at risk of having to send back to them.
But haven't we already spent it? We incurred the expense.
We incurred the expense, but we've gotten the money from then. So let's say we file for a million and we've, we've spent a million, we file for a million, they send us a million, but we can't really count on having all that million. So I wouldn't spend all the million that they send me until my audit is done and I'm confident that I'm going to be able to keep it. So you got to carry it, what's that, Carla, as a contingent liability or something on the books.
Well, so actually, we, we have to book all the expense, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to go to Mr. Shea.
I was just going to say, I almost see it as two different types of expenses, right? So again, the transfer station example, the transfer station had to get fixed, that's money that had to get spent. And if we can get reimbursement for it, then good, that's good for us. Take the, the other box that we had installed outside, that need, that we replaced, let's say we hadn't checked and confirmed that that was an eligible expense, yet we made the decision to replace it anyways, and they came back and said, no, that's not eligible. You know, we then run the risk of saying, oh, you know, could we have lived with the old box and not incurred that cost? You know, that is money that is, you know, a liability for us. So it's almost two different categories, you know, is it a, is it something that we want to purchase that or, you know, some action that we want to take? Or is it something that we're already locked into and if we can get reimbursement for it, all the better?
But I think that that's the two different categories of the CARES versus the FEMA. If we get FEMA money, presumably, if we qualify for it, then the money is ours and we're not subject to likely reclaim on that money unless they do an audit, find that we somehow lied about the application details or whatever. But for CARES, they give us the money that we claim, it sounds like, and then we're at risk of having to pay some portion of that money back. So I'm just suggesting that I would be cautious to, you know, not count on the fact that we're going to have the million dollars that they send us permanently until they do the final audit. And I would think you carry that on the books as you think you're going to get it, but you're not sure yet. So I, I think I'd describe it as a contingent liability to have to pay that back somehow until the audit is done. But again, I defer to the accountants to work out that.
I'm laughing because I, I, I deal with accountants every day and, and they, I can, I can see them shaking their heads when non-accountants start talking about accounting items and, and we don't know what we're talking about. But I, I think, I, I, I think generally that if, that if, I guess my view is if you all operate in good faith and you think something is potentially reimbursable and it turns out down the line that it wasn't, I think we can live with that. That's my view. You know, you know, don't push the envelope unreasonably, but, but don't worry that we don't have your back. Because if you folks are, are pushing and you're acting in good faith and you're seeking reimbursement for the town and it turns out that at the end of the day, some federal audit says, no, sorry, you don't get this, at least my view is we've got your back on that, you didn't do anything wrong, you tried to get as much money as possible for the town and that's a good thing.
Agreed.
Okay.
Marty, just one quick comment and, and I do, and, and like I said, I do want to publicly thank Carla, you know, we don't always have her in our meetings and that, but, but she has done a phenomenal job and, and I've learned everything that I know about CARES and FEMA from her. And, and I know that she's tipped the hat to Neil tonight and his FEMA connections I think have been very helpful in trying to put things together in the best way, especially for FEMA when you've got to prove things upfront. I, I, I think that, you know, we're trying to be as aggressive as we can, but again, Carla is trying to make sure that we're not putting something in, you know, and, and incurring something that we have reasonably sure that we're not going to get reimbursed from either one for. So, so again, it, it's, you know, Carla's done a good job filtering, you know, as the reasonableness test, you know, for this stuff and that. And, you know, again, you know, it, it's, it's been, it's been a lot of work for her in addition to her regular stuff and, but, but I think it is paying dividends and hopefully we'll continue to do so.
Thank you, Mike. Well, hopefully they'll expand, you know, the uses, they'll expand the deadline and it would be great if they would make it usable for revenue replacement. I mean, that would, that would solve a lot of issues for a lot of cities and towns, so.
Not to buy a lot, but I'm, I, I personally am a little disappointed that the federal government has been this difficult with some of these, you know, they have a job to do and they need to audit things, but at the same time, the spirit of some of this, what Carla is filing, if you looked at the detail and saw some of the questions they ask, you know, you know, how are things bolted, you know, how many inches from, from edges or things mounted? I mean, just, just questions that are, is this really helpful? You know, so I, I don't, I just wish, you know, not to editorialize too much, but I wish they had been a little more in the spirit of what I think this money was intended for, but that's just me.
Yeah, FEMA was asking for GPS locations, GPS coordinates of where, like, you know, shields, protective shields were installed, you know, for different things, you know, for employee safety or whatever. And I, I, I opened the email and I almost started to cry because I don't know GPS locations, but Neil does, so, so that was the back and forth. So he's been very instrumental and very helpful and, yeah, it's kind of a lot, but, you know, it's, it's, it's well worth it, well worth it.
All right, Carla and Ryan, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And we were going to let you go for the evening.
Thanks, have a good night.
Good night.
You want them for the policy change?
Oh, oh my goodness.
Sorry.
I put a lot of work into that.
And I had a comment on this.
I bought it.
Sorry about that.
Were that close.
Yeah.
The clean getaway, right?
Almost escaped.
All right, are we back to Brian or is this Carla or both?
Um, I can just, just explain real quick and, and Ms. Malinowski can jump in since, you know, she did play a lead role in this and I think the purpose and Chelsea, you can correct me anything I say wrong. So, you know, her thought, I believe, was to make sure that, you know, large and however you define large overages of line items and budgets are identified and dealt with and acted upon. So, but we, you know, I think the thought was to be reasonable. If a line item goes over twenty dollars or fifty dollars or a hundred dollars, this board doesn't want to deal with that. Or, you know, you may want an answer why, but I don't think you want to hold a meeting and decide, you know, if that's up to your approval or not. So I think she showed you the edits that she's proposing and, and as I said, the town administrator and the town accountant myself also looked that over and agreed that it's, it's fairly reasonable and makes sense, there's, you know, there should be some check and balance. So I think the thresh, the threshold ended up being five thousand and, you know, if, if someone, for example, spent more than, you know, was going to spend more than five thousand in any line item, we would get an explanation from the department and the town administrator preferably would have to approve that expenditure to be released. You know, five thousand being a sort of significant amount that there's some problem, you know, there's some, something very unexpected happened. So I think it's prudent that, you know, not only myself and Mark and Carla know, but the, the board is made aware of, because at the end of the year, this is to avoid any big surprises of in June or July, having to say, you know, someone overspent by thirty thousand dollars and the board was unaware of something and, you know, there's egg on someone's face. So we, we want to avoid all that and I think this will help a lot and if it's approved tonight, we're happy to, you know, we are happy to distribute it to the departments and let them know and I anticipate they'll fully cooperate, but, and Chelsea, you can, you can certainly tell me what I misspoke of.
No, you're, you're spot on. I'll just add, so I, I, the way I came up with the threshold was I went through the FY twenty budget to actual line items to decide how many line items would fall in five thousand or above in terms of over budget and there were twenty-six. And so I felt like it's a decent amount, but I didn't think it was something that was so astronomical that it wouldn't be within the bounds of this board to address. And then kind of after talking through with Carla, Brian and Mark on, you know, a, a line item threshold, we kind of thought it made sense for the five thousand to ten thousand line item overspend be approval by the town administrator being Mark and notification to this board, but not need this board's approval, but anything over ten thousand dollars would require this board's approval prior to the expense being incurred. So, you know, that there may, we may do this for this year and decide that we think the threshold should change. I think this was just a starting point and what we felt like was a reasonable, you know, amount to, for this board to look at.
Okay, I'm going to start with Ms. Brashow.
Thank you. I, I think this is great and I, I think it's, it's a good starting point. And I, I, I think it's a great thing to add to the process. Again, because I know, as, as we go through in the amount of time that I know I've spent as well as other members of this board and going through the fiscal year twenty and questions we had, they would be answered at the front end. So I just think it makes things a lot easier. That's it. Thank you.
All right, Brian? Brian Shea.
Yep. No, no questions.
Ben?
Good idea. I was a little confused by the language in section two E, the edit there. Seems to me that it should say, the second line there, item to be in deficit in X, in between five thousand and ten thousand, not in excess of five thousand to ten thousand. If you said deficit between five thousand and ten thousand or greater than ten thousand.
That's fine.
Report respectively.
I originally didn't have the five to ten thousand broken out.
Right, right. Yep. So I think with that small edit, I think it all makes sense and it's a good idea. Thank you.
Yeah, my only question was the number. And that's twenty-six during the course of a year?
Right, that's how the fiscal year twenty ended.
Okay, I mean, that doesn't seem, that, that's, that's a minor burden, but given the potential benefit, one that I think we can easily absorb. So, no, it looks good. So I will move to adopt it as amended.
Second.
Further discussion, none? Ms. Brashow.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shea.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. All right, unanimously adopted. Now I can, now I can move off. Three.
One fast.
But here is, a- a- and again, this is, this is my thought. The, the items in four and five just involve us. By us, I mean the Board of Selectmen and Mr. Purple. As do items six A and six B. So I guess what I would propose, since I think the, the Subcommittee posted a meeting for nine o'clock, that we go into executive session, hopefully for, hopefully it is, if not quick, it's not lengthy, and when we come out of executive session, go right to item six C, which is discussion regarding forty-five Highland Street, which is the only other item involving third parties.
The only point that I would make there is our agenda specifically says that we are not returning to open session following the executive session, so.
Yeah, I, I, it does, I, I, I've got to think and Mr. Purple, you know, derail me if I'm, if I need derailing here, but I have to think that we can vote to amend that.
I would, I would tend to agree with you. I mean, it's been, it's been announced that we're not going to return to open session. But, you know, we're, we're kind of making a quick call, you know, on the fly here on that, so.
I mean, the risk is that there are folks interested in items four through six who tune in and we're in executive session. What, Vanessa, will, will it, if, if someone comes on, will it show that we are in fact returning? Will, can there be a message or?
I'm not sure. I can try and reach Tom and check with him right now. We haven't had that question arise yet since we started using Zoom for remote meetings, but let me try and reach Tom and check in with him. I did want to just note that you do have a question from the audience as well.
Marty, before we, before we go there, I just want to let you know, I'm getting some texts from Mr. Malinowski and he's asking, you know, he says, you know, they can always do a little bit later and whether or not, you know, you want to set a time, set a time of ten at this point.
Okay, if they're comfortable, I mean, that's the, that's the, the sort of tension here because they've posted a meeting for nine o'clock.
Right. Right, no, I, I know, but, and, and I'm looking at what we have left in the agenda and, you know, can we get it done in forty-five minutes?
Um, I don't know. But why don't we put, why don't we say ten o'clock and we'll, you know, we'll try to be efficient.
Okay. All right, I'll let them know that ten is the new goal.
Okay. And Ms. LeVault has, you know, we're not, it, does it involve something we've just dealt with? Let me bring Kristen over because we've got another public comment coming up. Hi, Kristen, does this involve the, the thing we just got done dealing with?
The thing that you voted on without public comment? And I'm not sure if it was at Rex's attention that you were going to be taking a vote on the five thousand dollar spending cap and approval, but I would think that might be something where Rex does have more significant purchases from time to time that they would want to weigh in on and also like where authority between the commission and, and other boards and committees starts and ends. And I just feel like that was a bit of a surprise, maybe it's just me, maybe Tim was fully aware, I have no idea. I'm still the only one on, but to take a vote without our opportunity to reflect on that as a commission, because I can actually think of a real life example that we're, we're talking through right now where that would apply. I, I just think that happened very quickly. And so therefore I would ask that you do refrain from vote and I'm, and allow the commission to react and I, I might be, they might be fine with that, I have no idea, but I just know that, that will have a direct impact on some of our, like, discussions, proceedings, decisions, and so therefore I feel like that was a little bit rushed and not all the appropriate maybe discussions have taken place or the, the, the ability to react.
Marty, that was not a expenditure limit, it was a deficit. So it's.
And maybe I am misunderstanding, maybe I am misunderstanding, I just, it happened very quickly, so I just want to make sure.
Somebody expects a deficit in those ranges, then it, it gets flagged. So you can spend a million dollars as long as it's budgeted and approved and all that kind of stuff.
Well, when you say budgeted and approved, like, I just want to make sure I understand it, Sam, I'm sorry, and, and it just happened very quickly, so I just want to make sure I understand it. Sorry, I have children in my face right now. Um, can, maybe somebody can explain to me just one more time what that vote just signified?
Okay, it's a, it, it is a, it, it is a reporting and approval mechanism. Is Chelsea on? She's the, she is the architect. Chelsea, why don't you walk through exactly what? Again, this was posted in our packet, so it's not, I, I, I mean, it's, it's been part of the public record that it was going to be considered tonight since, the packet got posted on Friday, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, but Chelsea, go ahead.
Kristen, this was something that was part of our goals for this year was to give Brian and Carla give Brian and Carla and Mark a mechanism to be able to notify the board, and advisory for that matter, on line items that were going over budget in prior years. So, for example, if you, if, and this, and Rec wouldn't necessarily have too many instances of this, because in the town budget, you just have salaries. So unless there was some wage increase given to an employee throughout the year that was not budgeted for, then it really wouldn't apply to recreation. This is really to account for, for example, a study that a department wants to do above and beyond their budget that they think makes sense to do this fiscal year for some planning reason. It would require approval from this board if it was above $10,000. If we had misbudgeted a department salary line item, which happened last year, then this would give Brian and Carla a mechanism to notify the board to say, we have a problem, we misbudgeted something, we're going to expect a reserve fund transfer at the end of the year, so we're, we've implemented this to try to avoid surprises at the end of the year, and to be proactive and to give Brian and Carla some thresholds on what they should or shouldn't be bringing up to this board.
All right, thank you, Chelsea, that's extremely helpful, so thank you. It's just, again, it just moved through fairly fast, and I just heard the $5,000 threshold, so this would not apply to anything outside the budget, which to your point is just the salaries, because that's the only budgeted item for recreation, so therefore that, that limitation is, is really applicable only to, again, what's budgeted through annual town meeting every year.
Correct, yeah, so, I mean, you, you have a different threshold for the Rec revolving fund, I think it's $450,000. So that, that, and Mark, just jump in if I'm off base here, but that's not a individual line item with the GL tied to it. This, this is for, like you said, Rec would just be for salaries, so if, you know, you had an employee leave and you replaced them at a different rate mid-year or something like that, then that would be relevant to Rec.
And that makes perfect sense. I just, again, I just want that, that point of clarification, Mark, is that, that's accurate from your understanding as well?
Yeah, no, that is accurate, especially for recreation with the limited line items that you have, Kristen. This is really, the applicability of this is, is really pretty low. I think that obviously the revolving fund has a cap limit, and so, you know, the, the reporting mechanisms, you know, come into play when you start to exceed those caps. So, yeah, I, I think, I think that, that as Chelsea explained it, you know, there's limited, limited applicability for recreation on this, except when it may come to a salary adjustment that is, you know, significantly above what you've budgeted for, for the year.
Okay, thank you so much for the clarification, I really appreciate it. Very helpful.
All right, Kristen, thanks.
You're muted, Marty.
I hadn't noticed any comment, and I don't see any more, so I think we're all set to go to reports. And the chairman's report tonight is, I have nothing to report. So, Ms. Brascio, did you want to go last for reports?
I don't have anything to report.
Oh, I thought you did.
All right, I'll go last.
Ms. Malinowski?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Shea?
Thank you. So I attended the Veterans Day observance last week, representing the board. Just wanted to congratulate Mr. Wynott and Mr. Kalenda for planning the event in a way that gave proper credit to our veterans, and I thought did so in a way that was cognizant of and respectful of the pandemic conditions. Steve coordinated with scout leaders to be sure that those that lined up for the parade did so in a manner that resulted in everyone being well spread out. Once we got to the memorial before the start of the ceremony, Steve made a request for all attendees to follow the precautions in place, for folks to wear masks, maintain distance. And from my perspective anyways, that was achieved, and I'm glad that we're able to hold this event in a safe manner. I just wanted to thank public safety members for help coordinating traffic detours, also being onsite and available for medical assistance as needed. Thanks to those who did come out that morning, and thanks for those that did come out. Thanks for your cooperation with respect to the safety protocols. I thought the ceremony to cap off the Eagle Scout project was very well done and was very well received by Mr. Wilson's family. If you've not had an opportunity yet to check out the memorial in person, in particular that recently dedicated bench, I encourage everyone to do so. Thanks to the Fanafs for their continued care and maintenance at the memorial site. Congratulations to the Eagle Scout, Gabby Bezikas, for his hard work. Thanks to the board for asking me to participate. It's an honor for me to help contribute to the event. And lastly, they were mentioned earlier by our first two attendees. Thanks to Southboro Access Media for being there, recording it, and having it in a medium that's available for everybody in town to see. It was good to see Terry again in person, so, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. You and all the speakers did a great job, and the, and the weather cooperated. It was a great day. Mr. Stivers?
Nothing that can't wait. Thank you.
Ms. Brascio?
Okay, I just wanted to quickly congratulate the Youth and Family Services. Their gift card giving program was selected by the 100 Women of Southboro, so I thank you to them. They will be making a generous donation to the gift card program that can be used for holiday dinners and gifts for families in need in town. I believe there's, they're expecting over 50 families at this point to apply for the program, and any monies that are left over from the donation will be able to be continued to use to help people in town. So thank you to the, the group, the organization, 100 Women of Southboro for their generosity, and congratulations to the Recreation Department. The donation should be anywhere in the range from $10,000 to $13,000 approximately. So it, it's a wonderful feat, so congratulations and thank you to the 100 women. That's it.
All right, that is great news. Mr. Purple, Town Administrator, report?
Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, I've got a couple of items, excuse me, just to run through tonight. I will be.
That's okay.
I will be brief, so let's start with the ask first. Obviously, I think it's been noted tonight, you know, on a couple of occasions, we have a lot of Zoom meetings, and we have a lot of people who, you know, are doing Zoom meetings, and I think the good thing is that we're having a lot of people looking at meetings and seeing meetings that, that normally you don't see. And so I, I think that that's a good thing. Unfortunately, even though we're operating in a virtual environment, everybody wants to continue to hold their meetings as if they're in person, which means meetings are at 6:30, 7 o'clock, 7:30, you know, and, and it makes it difficult. I have had a, a conversation with, with Tom LaFlamme and a couple of other people about adding a third Zoom room, and, you know, to try to give us a little bit of, a little bit of cushion. And in the instances where, I don't know, I'll just pick a random board or committee, the Board of Selectmen adds meetings, extra meetings in here and there, we don't always have rooms because we're not scheduled for those meetings. So I, I'm requesting that the board agree, I know it's under Chelsea's new limit, but, but about $450 for us to go and, and get a license for a third Zoom room so that we can, and again, with public access, full access, the same as the other two, so that we can, we can continue to accommodate all the boards and committees that want to meet.
That seems, that seems a pretty reasonable ask.
Makes perfect sense to me, and let's put in for CARE's reimbursement for it as well.
Seriously, I, I, that's, that's probably an easy one, Brian, so.
An annual fee?
It's about $450. I think that, you know, our, our, when we, when we originally did the Zoom accounts, it was in March. So this will be basically to get us from now until March. I think Tom, it's at about $150, and then in March, we would be paying the new fee for all three rooms, so.
But the increments of 450, annual difference?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
So under Chelsea's policy, Mark, you can make this determination, right?
That's right.
This is a big step, so, you know, but.
I don't think we need to take a vote. I think.
No, 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 I saw the head shake.
All right.
Real quick, I alluded to this earlier, you know, in terms of the IT staffing update. We do have, we have advertised the position for IT manager to replace Tom. We do have about 10, a dozen candidates, a number of which who do have municipal experience. I also have been having conversations, we had a conversation late last week with the school and with their IT leadership. Today, there was a, a tour that Tom and the IT leadership conducted around the town to under, for the school to understand what we have on our side that we would be looking to manage if in fact we did look to consolidate IT operations with the school. And now there will be a report that'll be filed back with Superintendent Martino as to their recommendation, if we were to move forward on this, what that would look like. And so we would need, we'll need to understand that, you know, in the, in, you know, in the coming days. So we are operating on two tracks at this point, one, replacing what we have, you know, with, with another, you know, with, with quote unquote, the next Tom. And then we're also looking at, at the consolidated approach with the school. Obviously, you know, I've, I've requested of the school to help us, you know, bridge the gap between what we have and whatever our next piece is going to be, and, and I've had nothing but cooperation from them at this point. So, so that is, that is moving on a track. Hopefully next week, I'll be able to have some more information from you with maybe a little bit more meat on the bones.
That'd be great, Mark, and, and that is, when you say the bridge, for instance, if it turns out that, excuse me, we're going to pursue an option that, that pulls our IT operations under the same roof as the school, the bridge is, is, who takes care of our IT needs while that complete integration is happening? Is that what you're talking about?
That's what I'm talking about. So I think that, I think that the school is an integral part of either solution. So either we continue to do what we do, how we do, and the school helps us in the interim to get there, or we decide that we're going to do, you know, more of a consolidated solution, and the school helps us to get there, and it becomes, you know, a learning, you know, curve, you know, for them understanding what we do, how we do, and what our needs are, you know, so it makes that transition a little bit easier.
Okay, this is a pretty important item. Does anybody else have any questions or comments or, Mr. Purple, about it? It seems pretty reasonable and, and, you know, maybe some cause for optimism, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, we've, thank you, we've, you know, this is, this is, you know, the, the third time, fourth time. I think that I've had these discussions with the school with regards to IT and facilities. You know, when we've had a major departure on either side of the fence, I don't think there's ever been a disagreement that it's, it's good to take a look, but the timing has never really worked. This time, I think that there's, there's a chance that we may be able to get some traction with this, so I'm cautiously optimistic.
Great.
I had a, a follow-up conversation with AT&amp;T, and AT&amp;T is in the process of relocating their, their antennas off of the flagpole on the common into Pilgrim Church. And hopefully, my understanding is that that lease agreement document should be, you know, executed in the next week or so. And they had indicated that they are concerned about the bridge, again, we're talking about bridges, excuse me, the bridge between coming off the flagpole and going into the church. And, you know, they had indicated that they may be sending something to the Board of Selectmen for consideration, for the board to consider, to assist them with that bridge period. So I did see an email that came in shortly before the meeting tonight. I've not taken a look at it, but I will do that, and then we'll pass that along to the board. That may end up as a, as a, as an agenda item for the, for the meeting next week. And two public service announcements. One, the warrant for the March 20th town meeting is scheduled, you know, to close in, in December, and I would suggest that the board close the, close the, the warrant for, for articles at your December 15th meeting. I'll be sending out a reminder to department heads and to boards and committees, and we'll get something up on, up on the website, and then Vanessa can, can tweet that out, make sure that MySouthboro picks it up and that, so anybody who does want to submit an article can do that. Obviously, we've got half a dozen, 15 articles that carried over now for a couple of potential town meetings. So we will have those along with our normal course of, of financial articles. I've only had one new article submitted from the assessors on a tax deferral consideration. So I have not had any other new articles that have been submitted, but again, I would expect CPA, and, you know, they're potentially, you know, maybe some other articles, including the article we're going to be taking up, or the issue we're taking up next week with the downtown initiative. So that may be something else that would come forward. And the only other informational piece that I have, we got a notice today from MassDOT. They're going to be doing some work out on the Pike in the eastbound and westbound lanes, routine utility work. And so there's going to be a single westbound and eastbound lane in between exits 11A and exit 12 on Saturday and Sunday, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM. So if you're traveling out there, you know, during those times, you can expect to see potentially some slowdowns, because everything is going to be down to one lane on both eastbound and westbound. That's all I have.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. We have items A, B, and C. Are there any holes?
A.
Anything besides A? Okay, I will move to accept and approve items, consent items, B and C.
Second.
Discussion? None? Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. Those are both approved. Item A, Ms. Malinowski?
On page four, Mr. Healy, it, I believe that you said you met with Mr. Purple and the Advisory Chair regarding the budget? Not the Advisory Committee?
Oh, it was the chair, correct.
Page five, under Mr. Stivers' update, Mr. Healy asked the question on the timeline of the the plan, or the report, sorry. I didn't.
Same answer regardless of who asked it.
Maybe it would have been different, I don't know.
The question would have been asked better, right?
And then page six, it could be Mr. Norris, not Morris, under the sentence starting, Ms. Brascio asked.
It is Mr. Norris, correct.
Mr. Healy?
Yeah.
Can I make yet another suggestion on this point? It would be helpful on this kind of thing if we actually added line numbers on the minutes, which is easy to do in Word, it's a one-click kind of thing, so you can refer to line number 246 or whatever. Some boards do that. I think administratively, that's an easy thing, but.
I do not do, I do not do the minutes. I'm fine.
I call, but.
That seems, it's like, it's like a legal document. You got your, very easy to find.
Anyway.
Mark, can you just see if it, if it's, if it's pretty light lifting? For purposes of the draft, it'd be pretty easy to, to identify, because when Chelsea was just pointing those things out, my head was spinning trying to find them on the page without the, without a line number.
Well, that's because I think our minutes are so long, because there's six and seven pages because of the meetings, so I think if we had shorter meetings, there'd be less issues. We wouldn't get to page five and six, but I will, I will talk with Katie and see if that.
Notice that she can do that easily, because one click, so anyway.
All right, she's already fallen on the sword, so we'll, so we'll, we'll go that route and, and, and insert the line numbers.
Now we'll have no more changes, that's perfect, so.
With those, with those proposed changes by Ms. Malinowski, I move to approve the open session minutes, minutes of November 4th.
Second.
Second discussion, none. Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. Consent item 5A is approved. Um, all right, performance evaluation policies. I think this is pretty quick. Um, the one thing that remains is I haven't heard back from Mr. Norris. I sent him the package of materials, but I reviewed them pretty carefully, um, um, with Mr. Melholland. And we both are comfortable with, um, there not being any issues in the, again, remember there's three categories. There's a composite rating, there are people's individual ratings, and then there's pros, there's texts, there's comments. Um, and both of us went over the comments and are comfortable with, um, there not being any, any, uh, you know, uh, allegations of misconduct issues or something like that, that would be more appropriate in an executive session than an open session. Uh, I'll, I'm still waiting to hear back from Mr. Norris on that. But pending some issue that he has with some particular language and he points out, um, the, the, the process, and again, in discussion with Mr. Melholland, would be to, um, provide the materials to Mr. Purple. Give him an opportunity to review both the ratings and the comments. And if he chooses to, um, uh, reply, respond, um, to any of them. Um, and then those entire materials would be distributed to the board at, for our, I mean, I think we could probably do it for the December 1 meeting. Um, if for some reason we hit a crunch, we could always put it over till December 15th. But that would be the process. So that's number one. And number two is, um, uh, include, I mean, Mr. Kalenda was part of the review process. I think we include his materials. I don't think there's any downside to that. So the question is Ms. Malinowski, um, and whether or not, um, obviously you can participate in, in the review orally on whatever date we do it. The question is whether or not, um, you want the opportunity to, um, basically do the same thing that the rest of us did, which was to provide ratings and comments. I, I think it can be done relatively quickly and can provide you with, with, with blanks to that effect.
Yeah, I'm hap- I'm happy to do that. Um, I guess, do you have a sense of when we would do the next round of an evaluation?
That was my next, and I think what, what I'd want to do is target it for February, pretty quick turnaround.
Okay. I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy to, um, do one now if somebody can send me, um, the link to do it. I can, I can turn it around pretty quickly. I just don't, you know, I, I would intend on not holding you up from a December 1st.
Okay. So does that make sense to everybody? Again, I, I understand you all are operating blind, but the, the, but the minute I give them the materials to people, they're automatically public record. And so in some respect, you have to rely on, on Russ's review, my review, and Mr. Norris telling us that there aren't any, again, he's not reviewing them for, for substance other than are, are there issues that should be handled in executive session as opposed to open session? I don't think there are going to be. Does all that make sense to everybody?
Yep. Good. I think the real issue, Marty, continues to be timing as Mark's contract is up for renewal next year. So I think it's useful to have that conversation as quickly as we can to make sure.
I don't see any reason unless Mr. Purple, when I send you the materials, you say you need time beyond December 1st. We'll give you that and we could put it on December 15th.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's fine. I was just going to make the comment. I think I'd be extremely disappointed if there were things in there that required an executive session discussion that I was not aware of at this point, so. Um, but, but I, I appreciate that precursor.
Yeah, no, we're just dotting our i's and crossing our t's, that's all. Okay? Um, the update discussion on the fiscal year 21 goals, I don't even remember who suggested that that be a, an agenda item. It's not something we have to do tonight. Um, and it's just a, um, uh, m- maybe we can even put it on for the 24th as an, as another item. And just get people's reaction to whether or not the way the system we've got set up is, is, is working. Whether or not there are things that, that we're not paying enough attention to that maybe we should in terms of the goals. Again, I'm trying to track as, as best I can. And, uh, again, fire away with emails or otherwise if there are, if there are additional items that you want to update. But why don't we not spend time talking about that tonight?
Marty, I, I wasn't, I don't think I was the one who suggested it, but it's a great communication device. I have questions about some of the things where we're making progress that I'm not aware of. And I think it's a great communication device for the public. So I think it'd be very helpful to go through quickly and say, here's what's going on with each one of these things and here's what we need to do.
Sounds good.
Things moving, so thank you.
Okay, do we have? Um, Ms. Lavoli? And or, yes, I see Lori, and is Mr. Wei Shan there?
I don't see Michael.
Okay.
I am, but I don't know why I'm not. My video's not on.
We can hear you.
Oh, here it is. I wasn't given permission yet.
All right, hi Lori.
Aye.
Um. All right, here's where we are. Well, let me, Lori, let me give a summary of where I think we are. Um. There were, um, building permits that were issued for, um, um, work to be done at 45 Highland Street. Um, the work that was, they were not demolition permits, certainly not demolition permits for the entire property. Um, um. And I am assuming good faith on behalf of everyone right now when I'm talking about this. During the, the process of work being done on the property, um, um, sufficient damage was done to essentially effectuate a complete demolition of the property or close, enough of a demolition that, that really all that was left to do was to complete, um, um, a, a demolition. The property falls under the definition of a historical property under our demolition destruction bylaw. Um, the, um, uh, the owners of the property have, um, reached out and have indicated that, um, um, they are willing to, um, discuss and in fact have apparently plans that are in the, in the offing to, um, construct a replacement building. I think that's the only way you can describe it, a new ho- a new house. Um, but to do so in a way that would not be violative of the, um, the feel, the aesthetic, um, otherwise of the, um, neighborhood. And that they would be willing to do that in coordination with the town. Obviously where we find ourselves is anything but an ideal situation. Um, and Mr. Wei Shan is, um, now joined us. Um, and so, um, I mean, the purpose of the discussion tonight is to, um, if not decide a way forward, to discuss the possibilities of a way forward. Um, and I've had conversations with both Mr. Wei Shan and Ms. Lavoli about where things stand. And Mr. Wei Shan, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to let you weigh in here, but I'm going to try to paraphrase that Mr. Wei Shan, um, uh, uh, sort of adopting one of my phrases is, is, wants the perfect, which would be the, the, the existing historical house to still be there, not get in the way of the good, which is a, a structure that, um, fits into what is otherwise a historic, um, neighborhood. And Ms. Lavoli, I think you're of the same mindset. Is that right?
As far as it being rebuilt exactly?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you seem hesitant about that.
Right. As long as it meets the criteria of what the historical commission, then I'm okay with it.
Okay.
They do, it is a non-conforming lot, so, um, you know, there are some.
There are issues.
There are some issues there also that haven't been, been discussed. As far as if they put it exactly back, exactly where it's going to be, um, then the side set pack.
But those are technical issues to.
Technical issues.
To be worked through.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Wei Shan, are you there?
I am, I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, did I properly characterize your view?
Yes, you did, exactly. Um, our concern is to try to find a way to move forward on this, um, that respects the historical integrity of that neighborhood. Obviously it's right next door to the church and, uh, that whole district is, uh, the whole Southville community is a potential national registered district. So we are very interested in maintaining that sort of village feel of, um, of the house that was there previously.
Okay. Now, and this is the last thing I'll say. I mean, I've taken a look at our, the various bylaws that are in play here. And it's just, and, and a number of things. Number one, this is, this has, I think, has informed everybody that there might be some, some areas in the demolition bylaw that need, um, uh, uh, closure and, um, maybe some improvement because they're, they're, they're clearly, um, the town doesn't have a whole lot of, um, recourse here. Um, and here's the issue, the, if a demolition bylaw permit is issued, jurisdiction under that bylaw, um, for purp- for purposes of dealing with the homeowner and otherwise, and that's happening with some other homes in South Row right now, lies with the historical commission. That didn't happen here. There's not a, a demolition, um, permit that's been issued. So jurisdiction didn't attach to the historical commission. Um, jurisdiction does attach to the building, um, department because, um, they're the ones who issued the, the, um, uh, right now, th- th- there is a two-year delay in place, correct, Ms. Lavoli?
Correct.
From any sort of construction. So the question is for purposes, if we, if, if the, i- if, if the town's decision, our decision is to go forward with a resolution of, of building a home here that, um, that otherwise obviously fits the, the requirements of the lot, but that also, um, uh, satisfies the historical aesthetic of the, um, neighborhood. Um, it seems preferable to me that that process, obviously, the, the experts in this area are the folks on the historical commission. But the enforcement hammer, if you will, lies with the building department, not with the historical commission. They really don't have an enforce, any enforcement authority other than stopping the demolition, which has already taken place. Does that make sense? Yes and no?
Yeah.
Um.
Yes, yes, totally, um.
And so here, Michael, is that you who said totally?
Yes, that is me. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You guys are running so late, I'm hearing my jammies. So I'm not turning, turning on the camera.
Yeah, you're going to get to go to bed before us.
Yeah, exactly. So, uh, in any event.
Let me just, let me just finish, Michael, and, and then I'm going to s- see if there's, um, um, questions or comments by members of our board before I loop back to you and Ms. Lavoli, okay? Um, and so it seems to me that if, if we are going to pursue the, um, uh, the, the resolution here of, of pursuing the, the, um, the building of, of a home on this site, um, that it makes sense for the jurisdiction to stay with the building department, but that, that, that the building itself be done in close consultation with the historic commission. Therefore, we don't give up our enforcement, um, leverage. Does that make sense to everybody? Anyway, that's, that, those are my thoughts. Um, and, um, for anything related to this now, I'll open it up first to our board for any questions, either to Ms. Lavoli, Mr. Wei Shan, um, about where we find ourselves. Ms. Braccio?
Thank you. Um, w- well, I, I agree that we, we need to move forward, that this homeowner deserves to move forward, I guess. I just, who, who do you envision Marty is having the authority on this? The only authority and enforcement we have would be the building inspector because she would issue the building permit. So are you asking for Lori to work with historical, but ultimately Lori has the final say in issuing the building permit? What, what happens if, for instance, historical may not agree with what's submitted, but Lori says it meets all the provisions of the code? How, how do we then potentially resolve that, or are you not looking to down that path?
I don't think that's going to be, having talked to, talked to Ms. Lavoli and Mr. Wei Shan, I don't think that's an issue. Because I think Ms. Lavoli, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, you, I certainly do, and I think you do as well, recognize that the, the expertise, not in terms of whether or not a building permit should be issued, but in terms of what the building should look like so that it fits into the aesthetic of the neighborhood. Lot, that expertise lies much more heavily with the historic commission than it does with.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So the, the, I see the authority staying with Ms. Lavoli, but I, I, I think she and Mr. Wei Shan have, 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 um, um, uh, the same view about how this should go forward. And that is that the historical commission should have the final say as long as it's consistent with the building department's requirements on what, on, on whether or not the proposed building, um, uh, accomplishes what they'd like to see accomplished, given that there's already been a demolition. Michael, did I say that correctly?
Um, yes, yes, exactly. Um, again, um, our purview only extends to the facades visible from the street. So, you know, what happens inside the house, what happens in the backyard, what happens to the landscaping, really is of no concern to us. Um, what we are concerned is that the house be of a suitable style and scale and architectural representation that would not, you know, violate the integrity of the neighborhood. That being said, um, I hope that this doesn't set a precedent, uh, for these type of demolitions. Um, the bylaw was never intended for anyone to really, uh, enact this provision. Um, because we thought that the, uh, penalty would be suitable to dissuade anybody. Uh, so, you know, I'm hoping that this would be a one-time exception. Um, and, uh, you know, stand in good stead in terms of communication about consulting the list, consulting, uh, you know, making sure that everyone is aware of what buildings are covered by this bylaw and what the penalties are. Uh, you know, this, you know, sort of, this is a, uh, you know, I think a one-time out, hopefully. And that we never have to go down this, this sort of road again. But in terms of what, you know, we would look to would be just an initial review of the plans of the facade. Um, and after that, I would envision that we would just sign off and this would move down its normal course of, uh, you know, building construction.
Okay, Michael, thank you for that clarification and, and, and I would hope that would be how the process would go as well. Um, and, you know, that I, I also agree that, that this would be a one-time, um, you know, shot, I guess, for, for this to happen. So, um, that's it for me. Thank you.
Ms. Malinowski?
So the alternative is that it has to sit there for two years to go through the demolition bylaw timeframe. And so it would sit in the state that it's in now. Is that what the?
Yeah, yeah, yes, or it could, or, or the, the, the two-year hiatus could be challenged.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think, I think this sounds reasonable, given the situation, um, that, that we're in on this one. Um, so I, I think i- if, if Lori and Michael are comfortable, um, with this approach, I, I think it makes sense.
All right, thanks. Mr. Shea?
All right. Again, and just to, just so I'm 100% sure. So this two-year penalty, that's because a home that falls under the demolition delay bylaw was torn down without going through the demolition delay bylaw process?
Correct.
Correct, okay. And as part of this, that that two-year penalty would be waived as long as, as, as in agreement that it's, the new home is done in a way that we have described so far tonight?
Again, that, the, the, the jurisdiction for that two-year delay lies with Ms. Lavoli. She's the one who, she, who issues the order. Um, and obviously, i- i- again, this is where I go back to the, the deficiencies in the demolition bylaw. Again, you don't. Again, you don't realize there are problems with a statute or a regulation until, you know, the rubber hits the road. And that's what, really, it's one of the problems here. There's really, it's unclear what the, what the appellate rights are. It's unclear. You know, it's kind of an oddity that basically the penalty is, the only penalty is that nothing can happen for two years.
Right, there's no.
I mean, oddly, I mean, you could bring in a bulldozer, knock down a historically significant house and just go, see you in two years, under our bylaw. It's, so, so some work needs to be done on the bylaw, I think, to, to, to potentially put some additional teeth in it.
Man, Marty, I just, so first of all, when we wrote this, and I was majorly responsible for its writing, one of the reasons that there was not any stiffer penalty was that Town Meeting didn't want that level of stiffer penalty. We had made proposals previously to have language that was much stronger than that, and they thought that that was an infringement on private property rights. This was deemed sufficient because A, the owner would still have to pay property taxes on a structure, you know, based on its appraisal value that is now demolished. And B, if there had been a construction loan or mortgage on that property, the owners would potentially be in default because they had demolished a, a structure on which there was a mortgage. So as a, in terms of a penalty, you know, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars a year, potentially, and, you know, potential revocation of a mortgage. So you know, granted, the language could be improved always, but again, we thought that at the time that this was sufficient to dissuade anyone from this process. Obviously, we were wrong. Which is not the first time this has happened. You know, and certainly we're welcome, we're open to, you know, revisiting the, the language of this. But again, I just really want to stress, I hope that we never have to go down this road again. And that this permitting would come before us because had it come before us in due process, we would have simply instructed these homeowners that they couldn't do what they did. So in this, you know, level of communication that, that needs to happen here, I think that's a, a real improvement that we are looking for. So you know, and the, and the, you know, and the wild card factor is, I, I don't know what the homeowners are willing to do here either. I, you know, so, you know, we're standing by and
Right, and, and what you just said, Michael, is the reason I, I think that we should keep the jurisdiction with the Building Inspector as opposed to the Historical Commission because of the additional teeth that, that exist there.
Oh, I totally agree. As a matter of fact, the whole bylaw was written to have the responsibility be and determination be with the Building Inspector, knowing that the Historical Commission members come and go. And at times, you know, historically, as, you know, occasionally is not at quorum. So, you know, yes, I absolutely positively agree with that.
Okay. Brian, were you done or you have something?
I'm all set, thank you.
You are, okay. Mr. Stivers?
Thanks. I think this is the right way forward, given where we are here. I'm disappointed to find ourselves in this position. I guess one of the things, from an appeal standpoint, Marty, it seems to me that if Ms. Lavoli makes a determination that you waive the two-year waiting period or whatever, I think that somebody who's aggrieved by that could appeal to the ZBA, which is the normal route for appeal for decisions to the, of the Building Inspector, which I hope wouldn't happen, but I think that's the built-in appeal mechanism. But I think that the real issue for me is, is figuring out what we need to do to either strengthen the process, make it more clear for people, or to update the demolition delay bylaw to at least lower the risk that this kind of thing is going to happen again. And if there is a fairly clear solution, I haven't actually looked at the demolition, demolition delay bylaw recently. There's a fairly clear solution that would help, might be interesting to try to get that on the warrant for Spring Town Meeting to, to deal with that potentially. So again, I don't know what the right path is, but I think it'd be useful to, to ask somebody or some group, subgroup to come up with a suggestion about how do we strengthen the process or change the bylaw to lower the chance this kind of thing will happen again and try to get that done as quickly as we can.
Yeah, and I will, I will tell you, Sam, and, and other members of the board, I mean, I've, I, I dove pretty deeply into the email traffic, the permits that were sought here. And, and as I said, I, I said this to both, both Ms. Lavoli and, and Mr. Wei Shan, I, I am operating on the assumption that everybody here, including the property owners, operated in good faith. And tha- that's my assumption.
Yep, I, I agree. That's the way you're doing it.
I think this, this, this proposed resolution is a, is a good one. I also go back to Mr. Wei Shan's point, though, nobody's seen what the proposal is. And keeping the two-year hiatus in place unless and until there is sign-off, first from the Historical Commission, from the aesthetic standpoint, and then obviously, Ms. Lavoli, you do your job from a Building Inspector standpoint.
Marty, can I ask one question before we move on?
Yeah.
Lori, so can you tell us the status on the fencing that needs to go around this property before we move on?
I have asked them numerous times to install it and they have been silent. I asked a question a couple of weeks ago on moving forward as far as going through the legal process, and I haven't received a couple of comments back on that.
Let me, Lisa, can I jump in there?
Not sure if anybody else has.
Yeah, that's, that was going to be my point. And one of the things on this is that, is that, and, and I am, I am going to be a bit tyrannical on this because the, the the situation here is that there were communications, but there were lapses in the communication. Not in the fact that somebody didn't communicate when they should have, but people were kept out of the loop. And this is an example of it. I, I don't, and I could be wrong, but I saw an email earlier today that indicated that the plans submitted by the homeowners include fencing now. And that was an email that was sent, I think, to the Board of Selectmen, Ms. Lavoli, I don't know, you may or may not have been on the email.
I did not see that.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was sent earlier today. And that, that would, that really, again, having dived into this, there, there were issues with, with, I don't know if people just hit reply all and they don't think who needs to be copied on things, or, because again, there are gaps in communication here and they contributed to what could have been avoided. That, that being said, Ms. Lavoli, there was, there is at least a representation as of this afternoon that the homeowners have submitted a, a proposal for how they're going to do the fencing. I will leave that to you, whether or not it, it meets your requirements.
Marty, if I may just ask, I know you guys want to move on very briefly. I just will say that in the Historical Commission, we are working on ways to make sure this type of thing never happens again. We have submitted a draft that we'll be voting on during our next meeting that is a guideline for people requesting demolition delay in town that reviews the rules and regulations behind this and that, so that everyone can say that they were truly informed on this issue. And we certainly welcome your comments on this or to join our meeting, I believe it's December 8th. We're hoping, and also we have now up on the website in the last few months, also on the town website, are much more detailed instructions about how to go through this process. So again, I think this comes down, I echo the idea that it comes down to communication. And we're going to do everything on our end to make sure that it's absolutely clear and transparent for everybody that is applying for a building or demolition permit in the town of South Row.
I don't think, Michael, thank you, Lori, thank you. I don't think we have to vote on anything. I just wanted, I put this on so that, so that folks on the board could weigh in and have the opportunity to ask questions. But I think that, that, that it's in good hands with Ms. Lavoli and Mr. Wei Shan. And I know Mr. Cipriano has been having conversations with counsel for the homeowners, the landowners, I guess now.
Excellent. Then I bid you good night, Paul.
All right.
Ladies and gentlemen. Back to bed. Bye-bye.
Good night, Michael.
Turning your video on, Michael.
What, what?
For not turning your video on.
Yes, that's something you didn't need to see.
Can I just, can I ask one question?
Sure.
If this goes to, and any changes obviously need to go through Town Meeting, correct?
For the bylaw?
The bylaw, in any updates. Currently, it is a general bylaw. If you, and I don't know what this takes, probably a different voting mechanism on changing it to a zoning bylaw would def, would give in, in all aspects more teeth also, as far as hopefully this never happens again. Violations if we wanted to give monetary meaning to it. And I definitely think that, you know, the two-year, it just says two years, like you said, Marty, and, and there's nothing more than that. There's no actual enforcement procedure or what the following is. And if that's, you know, a little clearer, if somebody knows exactly what's going to happen besides waiting two years, like you can't build, you need to go through this process, you're going to have to build exactly what's there, then hopefully, hopefully it'll, it'll never happen again.
Yeah, I'm going to play around with it and continue to have conversations with Michael and I'll talk with you, as I said. You know, and, and again, I hear Michael, it makes perfect sense that, that there were concerns and, and, and the, the reason that the the penalty such as they are were left a, as, as currently in the bylaw. But, but you don't realize where there may be issues until something happens and something happened. And it's, it's a good time to, to revisit and see if we need to strengthen it.
I agree. All right, thank you very much.
All right, have a good evening.
Have a good night. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay. Where's my sheet? Oh, we are, we are, this is our final public comment first.
We've exhausted all attendees except one. Or two now.
But I don't see any additional public comment. No hands raised? All right, with that, we can move on to item eight, executive session. The Board will be entering into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, and not returning to open session for the following matters. To discuss the disposition of real property exemption six concerning the Arts Center. As the Chair, that would be me, declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. That would be the town of South Row. And to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law exemption seven, to review and approve the executives, executive session minutes of November 4, 2020. I know I asked you this last time, Mark, do we need a motion or is my statement that we're going into it enough?
It needs a roll call vote.
Yeah, it needs a roll call vote.
Okay. So I, I move according to the statement I just read.
Second.
Question none, Ms. Braccio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski? Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. All right, the Board of Selectmen has voted to go into executive session. Welcome, Mr. Malinowski.
Oh, we just need one minute to lock the webinar.
Well, hang on, hang on, Vanessa.
No, they've got to go into executive session too.
We technically need to call to order because I got four members here, so Andrew, Joe, Lisa, just be ready. Oh, so Marty, you've already read the preamble, correct?
Yes.
Earlier in your meeting?
Yes.
So I will call the Capital Planning Committee to order at 10:13 PM. And the committee will be entering into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, and will not return to open session to discuss the disposition of real property exemption six concerning the Arts Center, as the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. So I'll move that we enter into executive session per the preceding statement. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Lisa, roll call vote, Braccio?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Pfaff?
Aye.
And Malinowski is aye. I didn't miss anyone, correct? All right, I think we're good.
And Ms. Hale, are you going to now take us into executive session?